It's four o'clock here on November the fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. I'd like to call this Lancaster County Council Committee, the whole meeting, to order this afternoon and welcome everyone here. Would you please rise and join Councilmember Terry Graham as he leads us in the Pledge of Allegiance followed by the invocation?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Lord, we give thanks for this day, for this opportunity to meet as a council of the whole. We pray for our world, our country, our state, and our kindy. We keep them in your care. Your ask is questioned, Your name, amen.
Amen. Let's move on down to our approval of our agenda. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion for Ms. McGriff, a second.
Second.
Second for Mr. Blackman. All in favor, raise your right hand. We have unanimous approval. We have no citizens' comments this afternoon, so we'll get right on into our business. Our first discussion and action item today is the Lancaster County Airport Capital Improvement Plan, the CIP update. Mr. Marstall, Mr. Moses, and Mr. Holt.
Mr. Chairman and council members, I want to first highlight that this is a periodic update where we actually do need some action from you to approve the CIP. It'll be on your next agenda on November twenty-seventh, but this outlines the five-year plan that has to be submitted to the FAA in December. So we wanted to give you a preview today and then ask your action of support. Mr. Ken Holt's going to walk through the spreadsheet that was included in your packet, and then we'll go through these numbers just so you can see how the CIP is shaking up financially. And then, as Mr. Holt comes up to walk through these numbers, I do want to highlight, as I sent out information, we received more good news from the State Aeronautics Commission, where they are willing to fund more of the airport terminal project to the tune of roughly seven hundred and twenty thousand. So we certainly appreciate their support, which keeps our local match down under the threshold that we've identified for our budget purposes. So I want to thank Mr. Holt publicly for his work on that grant application and the good news that we got just yesterday. So if Mr. Holt will come up and kind of highlight the different projects that we've got identified in the five-year CIP.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, members of council, it's a pleasure to be here before you today. As Mr. Marstall indicated, this is what we do once a year because the FAA requests that we update the five-year capital improvement plan. As you'll see at the very top of the spreadsheet, it's for federal fiscal years 2025 to federal fiscal year 2029. We are currently in federal fiscal '24. So what we're showing here in '24 and '25 is that you will be reimbursing yourself with your bipartisan infrastructure law, AIG, or Airport Infrastructure Grant funds for the terminal building and the vault. And we're also showing that in 2026 as well. So just as a reminder, the BIL is a five-year law, and it will, the last year that will be in existence unless they decide to carry forward with it will be 2026. I'll make a note there that the one hundred and forty-five thousand is highlighted in that sort of pale yellow. They are, the FAA is currently taking a, what they call a two-year snapshot, and basically what that does is they update all of the information of all the airports that are in what is called a National Plan of Integrated Airport System. And then those numbers feed formulas they have in place that determine what the bipartisan infrastructure law, airport infrastructure grant money will be for each airport. So as it indicates down at the bottom in the legend, those numbers are subject to change. They could go up, they could go down, but just to make you aware, that's not a firm number yet. They're going to conduct this.
What numbers can go up and down? I lost you, I'm sorry.
The one forty-five is...
The ones that are highlighted in that pale yellow color.
There's no highlights, huh?
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
If you see what's on the screen, this is what...
Okay. I did that from my own notes, I apologize. It's the one forty-five, it's the, you see the project funding plan? Yes, that's exactly it. The one forty-five for 2024 is the exact number. When they do this snapshot this year, those numbers are likely to change, and so it may go up or down from one forty-five, but we're just planning on it being one forty-five. So from my discussions with the FAA, they don't think the numbers will change much. And then in 2026, we're proposing that we'll design the hangar, a hundred and twenty-five by a hundred and twenty-five-foot hangar. And then in 2027, that hangar would be constructed, and what is highlighted up there in that light blue is the local share, which includes nine hundred thousand from the capital project sales tax three. And then the, after the hangar is constructed, we're just basically carrying over your AIP entitlement money. We took this before the airport advisory committee, and that's what they thought would, at this point in time, would be best to do, is just we'll carry that money forward, and if we identify a project in those outer years later, then we always have a chance, once a year, to update this plan. Any questions?
One twenty-five by one twenty-five hangar, what would it be marketed to? What kind of planes or how many are...
It could be a variety. It could be one that would store several planes, it could be one that would store one plane.
So it would have the ability to maybe put a divider in if we needed a kind of hangar?
Or sometimes it'll do like a bulk hangar and put two or three in there, jets.
Part of the airport advisory board or committee conversations been one continuous hangar, open hangar, where we can hopefully house three, but looking at the bigger jets. So depending upon how big someone might want to house there can dictate how many will fit in the hangar. But again, Mr. Holt, on this information, with the money that is unprogrammed, so to speak, in 2028 and 2029, can that money be committed to the hangar if needed?
Yes.
Okay. So if we need a bigger hangar, more hangar stuff, we can use that.
More than likely in 2027, there's going to probably be a lot of excess funds from the sales tax, capital projects, three.
That's true, I got you, they can use that for that, true.
But a lot of us want to see that go toward the detention center, so...
Yeah, that'll be it.
Can't spend it twice. At least I don't think I can.
You can promise it more than once.
Some promises... That's down the road, somebody else's problem.
So this is the information that we'll bring the spreadsheet again and just highlight for a resolution on the twenty-seventh meeting to adopt the airport CIP. Thank you, Mr. Holt.
Thank you, Mr. Holt.
Ken, I'd like to personally thank you and Paul for what y'all do for the airport and these grants that you're getting for our county. It's just superb, so I really appreciate what you've done.
And I did told you what he said, same thing.
It was our pleasure. We've been very blessed and fortunate. It's almost close to five million now in grants. But the only other thing I'd like to say is I wish all of you a wonderful Thanksgiving. I don't know if I'll see you before Christmas, but a wonderful Christmas as well, and appreciate all of you and what you do. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Holt. All right, we got our, let's move on down to six B, our Fire Growth Management Plan. Mr. Marstall and Mr. Player.
Mr. Chairman and council members, for this fire, the next agenda item, the Fire Growth Management Plan, as Mr. Player comes up, want to highlight, we have a PowerPoint presentation that we'll go through for you. We also have Lawrence Flynn, he's online, and he will do a page or two of this presentation to talk about potential funding. As you'll see here from Mr. Player, a couple of things we want to focus on today is the apparatus request, which he'll highlight, and then potential capital needs and how we might fund that, and we'll give you some options at the end of the presentation. So Mr. Flynn's on screen to the left camera, so make sure you know, Mr. Flynn, you're on screen. But we'll go through and have Mr. Player start out our presentation.
All right, before we get started, I requested a complete list of all the equipment in every fire department, and this does not contain that. I would like to have that information before we get started, available to everyone.
I can't give it to you today, but we will have that information to you.
I think we need that before we get into making decisions.
Well, today, because it's not a vote day, it's not a decision day, but that is indeed noted that we will have that for everyone, if not on Friday.
I was going to say, before the next, before we go into discussion...
Yeah, we might want to bring this back to committee.
We need to have it...
We will. Yes, before we, I want everybody to see everything before we start taking it...
We'll have you, we'll have you there.
...readings. All right, go ahead.
Chair, you going to do the slides? Okay. All right, we'll do that. If you'll go ahead into the first slide, then. The whole goal that we have is a fire service that we've worked in for years is to have no first-out apparatus that's more than fifteen years old. We've got seventeen fire departments now that we're trying to fund and place apparatus in. At this point in time, the county owns all the apparatus. We purchased every piece of apparatus since the 2007 purchase. We did have some tankers that were purchased using firefighter assistance grants in 2003, four, and five, but after that, everything that has been purchased has been purchased by the county. We did a large purchase, if you all remember, we've already talked about some of that, and we'll go over it a little bit. Large purchase in ninety-seven that were from the KME manufacturer. Then we did the purchase in 2007 that was Pierce, and then we did the purchase in 2016, which was Pierce. So the, in this purchase that we're recommending, which you do have a spreadsheet on, there are seventeen departments, and every department gets at least one piece of apparatus. The commission has always tried to strive to make sure that every department was treated as fairly as possible, and in this particular situation, we really need to do a larger purchase than that, and we've already talked to you about that in other times. But this was the commission's initial recommendation before we made the decision that we did try to need to get all of the KME forwards out of our system. So you've got the recommended apparatus become all first-line. Now, what I mean by first-line is, remember, we are still primarily volunteers, so I can't say first-out because depending on what the call is will determine what truck they drive out of the building first. In our terminology, that's first-out. So if it's a, the engine usually goes first on everything, so all of these pieces that are engines would actually end up being first-out, but the tankers or the rescues necessarily wouldn't be first-out. So I just want to make sure we do understand that. Next slide, please. The 2016 bond was the last thing that you all did in a large purchase. Now, we did the ladders as well, but the 2016 purchase was about six-point-six million and change, and that purchased eighteen pieces of apparatus. The final payment on that bond was made in March of this year, March of twenty-three. We would have liked to have been ready to go and be ready to purchase again. Of course, there were other things that the county's trying to do at the same time, and we had the issue come up that we, that we needed to talk to you about, that determined what our recommendations were going to be, and then we've got to go with decisions that you all end up making. If we were to order today, we'd be looking at forty-four to forty-six months delivery time. So I want you to keep that figure in, and I'll give you that number again in a little bit in another slide. The ladders that you purchased, which is the last bond you did for the fire service in twenty-one, those ladders, we're probably going to be doing the final inspections in December, and they'll probably be delivered either late, late December, meaning right at the end, or in January, or I would think maybe February at the latest. So it's been a little over a year since we ordered those particular trucks. Next slide, please. The anticipated cost of the purchase request that you have in front of you, the spreadsheet that you have, comes to an anticipated cost of sixteen-point-six-five, sixteen-point-six million, and you've got the exact figure there. That does not have a volume discount in it. We've not done a request for bid, or we've not gone and gotten, we're using the consortium bid process, because that's a national bid, which gives us a little more buying power there. But even at that, when we finally do the order and we know how many trucks and what kinds of trucks we would be ordering, there'll be a volume discount depending on which manufacturer we end up going with. So that's not figured in, so this should be a worst-case scenario. Now, that's based on today, it's not based on two years from now. Everything has gone haywire in every direction, trucks are no different. But the recommended purchase would be twenty-four different pieces of apparatus, and you see the breakdown there in the slide. And again, if we ordered that today, and we know that's not going to happen, but if we ordered that today, we'd be forty-four to forty-six months out to delivery, almost four years. Next slide, please.
Yeah, it's a question.
Yes, sir.
I was on here when the last trucks were ordered, and one thing that I want to make sure that, I know y'all own a certain type of truck, but this is the taxpayers' money, and the bids are very complicated and long, and in looking at them, as I can remember last time, there are a lot of items specified, you know, what kind of brake systems and such and such, and I want to make sure that whatever we put out there, that more than one manufacturer is able to supply those vehicles. So, you know, we got to, I know, I know what you want, you know, you know what brand you want, but, but we, we, it doesn't need to be so specific that only one, you know, one company will bid on it. You know what I'm talking about? Yeah, we, it needs to be a competitive bid and...
Let me follow up on that, because I think that was our discussion last time. The apparatus that you're going to order, is it usually, you usually send those bids to multiple companies, or do you have one specific company? Because I remember it was one specific company that gave us all we wanted.
The, in the past...
Yeah.
...we had done the competitive bids, and even though we use a specification, any manufacturer can tell you how, and in the bid document, there was directions on what they needed to do to determine, were they meeting that requirement? Meaning if they said it was brand-specific, if they can do the same thing and prove by a third-party certification that it would be just as good as that particular, whatever we described, then we could accept that.
So the specification comes from the grant, whatever you require, where do specifications come from?
We write the specifications ourselves. Now, that we have done, the latter purchase was done using the consortium bid, and I'm not the, there's a moniker for it, but I can't remember that for sure, and I don't want to tell you something wrong. Procurement does that, and that's using a national bid, and we do go to manufacturer for that, and look at that particular and see who's going to be most competitive with that. So it may be that we have to go back based on what the chairman's saying, back to the competitive bid, as opposed to using the consortium bid. The consortium bid works easier for us, and it works easier for the county because it's based on a national bid with specifications that have been done by the manufacturers.
What do you mean, what do you mean exactly by consortium?
It is a consortium that the county's part of. The county's a membership, or has a membership in a number of different consortiums that have already done large bids, and then the county picks and chooses out of that through the procurement process.
Is that like the state?
It's similar to the state bid, but it's on a national level.
A purchasing pool.
Just a South Carolina level.
Is it cost-effective that way?
I'm sorry.
Is it more cost-effective when you go through the consortium?
We think it is, yes, ma'am.
I don't think nothing's cost-effective now, everything's gone...
Well, now...
I mean, there ain't...
Let me rephrase, I agree with everything you just said there, I think everything's gone completely haywire.
Supply chain, I can imagine trying to have, yeah, all the parts for a fire truck.
I can't, there's nothing I can do about that.
Yeah, I know, I know that, that's terrible.
And we won't figure that out tonight.
But I guess there must be a limited number of suppliers if it's a four-year wait?
There are a number of fire truck makers. There are a few good apparatus builders. And without going into brand specificity, I would like to leave it there. Now, if you want to talk to me privately, I'll be glad to tell you what I think. But there are a lot of fire truck manufacturers out there that build a very cheap product, and it won't hold up, and you end up paying the price for a long time in repairs and maintenance and breakdowns, and you have to replace them quicker. We've gone with what we think is a good manufacturer in the last two or three purchases, and we do have, because we're buying custom cabs on most of our engines, we have the ability to refurb those, which means you send them back to that same manufacturer and have that truck basically gone through completely, updated, standards are met, and it comes back out. That comes in at a cost of about half of what a normal purchase would be. In future purchases, we'll be able to take advantage of that. We're not to that point this year, and on the recommendation for this purchase, because the trucks that we bought that have that ability are too new. They were the 2007 purchase and forward, and we still bought commercial chassis on tankers and on the rescues, so those are still in that vein, so.
Well, I guess you need to make sure you can get parts for the life of that piece of equipment, and that company will be there.
I agree with you, but again, I don't have any control over that. I wish I did. I wish we could make that part of the requirements, but we can't. Some manufacturers keep things longer, if they make it themselves, they have more access to it. Mr. Chairman, did I answer your question completely? Trying to remember exactly what point I'd gotten to.
You haven't highlighted that there's two components of the recommendation, you have the limited recommendation now, you're at the full...
Yes, there's a limited recommendation, and then there is the complete recommendation, or what we'll call the complete purchase. Our goal is to have no apparatus in our fleet at all that's over twenty-one years old. Fire trucks, and Mr. Chairman, I know you have asked for mileage and hours, and we're going to give you all of that information, but I want y'all to remember that fire trucks are going to be different than a vehicle you bought and drove up and down the road on a daily basis. Every hour that that fire truck is running is a hard hour, every mile that that fire truck goes is a hard mile. They're sitting in the station, cold, we crank them up and out the door they go as wide open as we can run them, and they're governed, so we don't get completely crazy. But everything about a fire truck has to do with age as opposed to miles and hours. Those are important because there are certain mechanical things that that causes over time. Mr. Marstall is in the mechanic business, he understands seals and everything else that goes with that, and as time goes by, all of those become problems. And so that's why we'd like to get to a point where we have nothing more than twenty-one years old. With our seven-year buying cycle, had we been able to maintain that, we would have been almost in that position, but we're not there yet. So this purchase tries to help address that as well. Some stations, because of that, if we, when we go into the complete replacement plans, some stations would receive more than one piece of apparatus. And the reason that is occurring is, is that as we've done these purchases in the past, we try to do at least one piece of apparatus for every station, so that means some stations got left behind a little bit on something that was older, so they became a hole in the system as far as being able to get things out of the way. So, and that rolls around at different times, and so this particular purchase is when there's a number of those stations that would have as many as two, some three pieces of apparatus that would be replaced, depending on how many pieces of apparatus are in that station right now. That goes back, you'll be able to see that when we give you all that data before the end of the week. The complete purchase has twenty-four pieces of apparatus, and with the limited replacement recommendation, or I'm sorry, twenty-four pieces of apparatus in the limited replacement recommendation, plus to complete it, nine more engines and three more tankers. Unfortunately, the engines are the more expensive of the things that we order unless we're ordering ladders. There are no ladders in this, we did those out of sequence. And in that, the total anticipated cost would be twenty-six-point-nine million in that, in that particular purchase. Next slide, please.
Darren, the limited purchase is twenty-four items, and then the total of the request, if you could get it all, would be another twelve on...
Be thirty, yeah, be thirty-six items, yes, sir.
I know I'm going to make some firemen mad and some fire departments, I just want to make a statement that that's great that everybody gets a new truck, but in reality, to me, it should be based on need. I mean, you've got stations, full-time stations that are going out, I don't know how many times a week, and then you've got some that we're going to buy a new, a new truck, and it's going to sit there, and where the, where the, I would like to see some justification of why, you know, why isn't Pleasant Valley or Indian Land not getting two or three of those, and a station is only doing very little volume, you know? I have trouble justify spending nine hundred thousand dollars on a truck that's going to be used once a week, and I got to tell another citizens if I put it in this other station, it's going to be used twenty times a week. So, you know, I just, I'm just kind of against just to blanket make everybody happy, and I know I'll probably get some calls, but I think it needs to be more on a need basis than try to please everybody. So I know I'll get some negative feedback, but it's the taxpayers' money, and I was elected to spend it the most efficient way to take care of the most constituents in the, most situations where fire trucks would be needed, so that's, that's just my thought on it. And, you know, I know y'all are going to move forward whichever, you know, whichever way you are, but that's, that's just the way I feel about it.
The only thing I would ask you to remember is that we're, the trucks that we're putting in here are the oldest trucks in the fleet, so they are the ones with the age on them. It's not, we are trying to be as fair through the...
And nobody is bitching moving some trucks from station A to station B. I mean, I, I don't know, I'm not a fire truck expert, but I just, I just hate to see us spend money, you know? When I was on here, we bought everybody a Jaws of Life years ago, and some of them probably are still in the same box that they were purchased with.
I wish that were the case, but it's not. Unfortunately, we have so many bad wrecks in this county, they all get used, some more than others, but they all get used.
All right, that's just my thoughts. All right.
Okay, moving on to some... Okay, moving on to some staffing issues that we've got also that are going to be going on at the same time, that we're looking at these other needs. Because of the time and the family, and the family needs, and the training, and, and the increased call volume in a good many places in the county, it's harder to get volunteers. That's nothing new to you, we've been telling you that for a number of years, but it, it is getting worse and worse. Thankfully, with our school program, and, and the fact that we do still have some people coming in, we, we're sore able to maintain at about the 243 to 248 level as far as the number of volunteers. And a number of our career people figure into that volunteer number, because they are volunteers in this county, when they're not operating in, in the career capacity, meaning they're not assigned to the station, they may be operating all over the county, even though we do pay them to go on calls. So I'm not telling you that they volunteer outside of work, they can't do that. But we do pay them to go on calls, but they do serve volunteer in their individual communities as well, in other facets in that fire department. The population growth has given us an expectation of a higher level of service. People who are moving into the county move from areas where it was mostly career. They're not used to a volunteer system, they're not used to the limitation of services, so they're asking for that. That, that has exhibited itself very readily in the Indianland area where those people were willing to pay a whole lot more money to get a much increased level of service. And thankfully, we've been able to address that, and we're moving forward in that area. But those same pressures are building in the rest of the county. We're basically at a breakpoint when it comes to participation and, and the response on calls. We'll have a lot of stations, you know, we, we don't have that many missed calls, but when we have people going to the call, it may be one person, it may be an older person driving the truck, which is good, the truck has to get there, but we got to have somebody to work off the truck and work in the fire, if there's not career people there to do it. So, all of those are pressures that are building in our system. So we're, you know, at some point, we'll get to where we're past the breakpoint, and we'll have a fire call that goes unanswered, and I'm talking about truly fire, not a, not an alarm, but we'll have something that needs response, and, and we'll be short-sighted on that, because we just basically don't have anything in place to cover that. And that, that's a weakness in the volunteer system, and if that's all we're funding, people just have to understand that. But we don't want you to get blindsided, and not, and us not tell you that those pressures are building and coming to bear. The Indianland Consolidated Fire District is the first fully funded, and with hiring anticipated for more staff to come on. You've already done that, and, and taken care of it for a couple of years, and I, you know, there's more has to be done there, we all know that, as we were addressing that individually. But again, the same, the same thing is building in the rest of the county. Next slide, please.
Darren, yeah, the first, I didn't mean the first, so you made a comment, we helped with that, so to speak, but are you saying that other parts of the county are not getting fully staffed? And if they're not, why not? If we can staff up there, why can't we staff down here? That make sense?
We don't have.
You don't have a fire feed district?
Yeah, we don't have the staff in. The Indianland currently has four-man engine companies, and I use the word man as, as a firefighter. They have four firefighter engine, engine companies, and then right now, they've got two administrative staff. We have just hired five more captains, so they'll be, they'll be having the four-person engine company, along with a shift captain on each one of the shifts at both of the stations. Indianland Station One, Indianland Station Two. Station Two was the Pleasant Valley Fire Station. So they'll be coming out of there, and they will be, we've already posted for firefighters that will begin to fill out the shift at Pleasant Valley, the Pleasant Valley Station and Station Two. So that's why I say they're, they're going to be fully staffed. In the rest of the county, you have the 12 people that you have funded that work out of my office. You have the staff that works in my office that responds out in the daytime. Those 12 people are eight to five right now, and we'll be changing their schedules to try to make it a little more amenable to them and to the service we give, doing four tens, and, and scattering that to, to, to be able to work it and, and make it more available six to six, as opposed to eight to five. Because we've noticed there's a lot of calls come in right before, around seven o'clock in the morning, and there's a good many calls come out around five. And so they're either not on duty, or that's when they're getting off duty. And they go to those calls many times, they, they respond before they come to the office, and then they stay late and go to the call to make that work. But that's the only staffing you have here. Kershaw, remember, has its contract, so they have two during the week. We place one person down there as part of the rescue plan, so there's three firefighters there five days a week. Kershaw, also, because of that fire contract budget, there's a little bit of money in it, they try to have at least one person in their station on Saturday and Sunday during the daytime, so that at least a truck's ready to run if they have a call. But, but again, that's based on funding, and part of that's driven by how much overtime the two people on the contract have to end up getting, based on the number of calls they run. So, we just monitor that and let that work. But other than that, we don't have any staffing down in the other part of the county.
And the Fitch study said, and I forgot what, what year it was done, it was 18?
16.
16. And it said that we should be hiring two paid firemen per year?
Yes, sir.
So...
You'd be at 24 out of my office now if you had done what Fitch said.
How many did we give you this budget sets?
Two. That's the first two we've gotten since 2016. The Harry Askin Study was done in 1996. It also said two firefighters a year. We'd be at 54 if we had done what it said.
Mm-hmm.
Two a year. But we haven't done that, so that's water under the bridge at this point, so.
But, but the 12 you've got that works out of your office, do you have, do you have any vacancies that we haven't filled?
No, sir.
Okay.
The, the salaries that you all gave us have made us very competitive. I will tell you that for the five captain slots at the Indianland Station, we had 32 qualified applicants, and they were able, they were able to go through them. They're processing right now for firefighters. There's, how many slots, Greg?
Three slots.
Three slots for firefighters right now, we've got eight applications.
That's a change.
Now, every one of them's not a firefighter. There, there are a couple of them that are, that are not firefighters, they've applied. Of course, you don't have to be a firefighter to apply. We look at the applicant pool once we get done with the applications. So, they're anticipating maybe as many as 30 applications on that as well. So you've made us competitive as far as that, and we, we've maintained, you know, the salaries really did help, and I, I really appreciate that.
But Indianland put their two fire departments together to make them more efficient, and we also have a rooftop fee.
You do.
A fire fee. And, but the rest of the county doesn't have that, or doesn't have any plans to do anything similar, as far as I know.
But we're going to talk about that, I hope, before we get done tonight.
Then I'll, then I'll hold the rest of my questions till then.
Okay.
Thank you, Darren.
Okay. And, and to your point, we're talking about the Fitch Study in, in this particular slide, and, and the things that it recommended, and so we've basically covered a good bit of that. The Fitch Study called for a number of things. It called for a training facility, it called for all kinds of things, and, and I'm going to address that in some of these slides as well. Next slide, please. The Fire Commission has had what is called a moving forward in the Fire Service Committee that's been meeting for now a number of months. We focused on trying to figure out what kind of budget we would need. We're kind of anticipating that we'd be doing mileage. We have anticipated that it would be somewhat, we're going to call, for lack of a better word, county-wide, outside of the districts that are already established. So, based on the Fitch Study recommendation, which call for the placement of four locations, four stations basically in the county, based on high call volume, what we'd call a heat map, those four locations would be there. So the, the committee has, has planned for four locations with four firefighters per station per shift. It would be the full complement, 24/7 coverage, three shifts, four firefighters per shift, with three battalion chiefs, that'd be one of those per shift, to manage it, because we don't have staff out in the middle of the night and on the weekends, although if something happens, we end up out, but, but you, you got to be able to manage the system. So that would be 48 firefighters, based on a 24-hour, 7-day-a-week schedule on shifts. Three battalion chiefs. That would cost, based on the Indianland numbers that we're working with right now, budgeting and the salaries that we have, $4.8 million for staffing and benefits. The overtime, we'd need an overtime budget for that, it would be 1.2 million. And again, overtime always is a good educated guess, but we think that would be enough. The four stations would need to have 2.4 million for operating costs for the year, because remember, you've got fully staffed stations.
Is that 2.4 million per station, Darren, or 2.4 million total?
Per station.
Operating costs would be 2.4 million for all four.
Okay.
I think that's right, isn't that correct, Greg?
Yes.
Greg's chairman of that committee, too, that's why he's sitting in the back of the room, so that if I have a memory lapse, he's there for my backup. So all four stations would be 2.4 million for operating costs. Now, we still have the volunteer stations to operate, you're already, you're still paying a lot of what goes on there. You're not paying, you don't own the building, but we're paying for basically everything that goes on with it, except the maintenance on the building, and we even have a mechanism by which we help them with that, based on time. Doesn't necessarily pay it all back, but it helps them. But the operating costs for the 15 volunteer stations would be 1.4 million. That's based on $75,000 per station. Now, if you're doing mileage and you're in a budget that you're, you're doing that, they wouldn't necessarily just get 75,000 handed to them, there would be some mechanism by which that would be approved. They would apply, justify, and then have that budget approved, or that expenditure approved as we move forward. And that's up to you all to decide how that's going to be allocated out, based on whether you do a board, whether you do it administratively, using somebody in my position or somebody else of that nature. But that'll be a council decision at that point. So, we're...
Darren, the math is confusing me. So earlier, we said there were 17 stations?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, right here. And so now we're talking...
19.
Yeah. Thank you, Charlene.
Well, you're building four buildings, they're not, we're not adding fire districts, you're building, at some point, you're going to build four buildings that will be placed somewhere, and they'll end up in an existing fire district. So what, the other, the 17 is fire districts.
So it's not stations?
We use the term station district interchangeably, but no, ma'am, there, it's not fire districts. But if you, if we put four stations out there, because we don't have...
In addition to the 17 equals 21.
Yes. But they won't be new fire districts, they will be in there, but you'll have career people in those four stations responding to the entire county, it won't be just responding in a single district.
So what happened to the 17 when you said it'd be 15 volunteer stations? I guess we're talking about the two stations that are not counted for in this?
Yes. We, we fund...
Indianland, we're not in that number.
Yeah, Indianland's not in that number. They've merged, but we're not considering them a volunteer station anymore, they're primarily career.
But that, Indianland is included in the 17?
In the 17, yes ma'am.
Yeah, I, I had the same question Alan had, because...
But the, don't confuse the four...
On the same wavelength?
Don't confuse the four Fitch Studying, I'm sorry, I didn't make that clear. Don't confuse the four Fitch Study locations as being more stations. That's more buildings, and four buildings that we need to add, that's why we, we need to talk about that as well.
You're going to get to that point?
Yes, sir, I think that's the next.
You're going, you're going to have a building, but it's not a station? Is that what you're saying?
It's not a district.
It's not a fire district.
Not a district. It's going to be owned by the county.
Yes, sir.
So there'll be, there'll be county personnel.
But if, if there's a station that's close to that, won't it just go into that building?
We, we don't know the answer to that question yet. We also have the problem of most of our fire stations would have to have a huge amount of money put into them, probably more than you could build a station for by the time you got done, to make them able to house with the current standards that have to be met when you put career people in a station.
I, I would hope that we research, since a lot of stations are struggling, you know, the ones that used to be the strongest are, are having trouble. I would hope that, that there would be some common sense in this process, that, that, that we're not asked to build four new stations, close, they're going to be close to other ones, where we really could convince somebody to convert, or, or whatever, from a volunteer to a, a county facility, whether we have to build a new facility or not. Because I just don't, you know, you, I don't know how much you cost, talking about for a fire station, have you got that figure in mind?
We, we did a figure back when we were doing the CIP plan.
Yeah.
And based on the numbers that the city has gotten for its most recent station, and this is here, so I don't have it in writing, but Greg's sitting back here in the back, the numbers they're being told by the architect on their substation, the number we had is probably a half of what a building costs at this point for a new building. So, we're talking millions of dollars, we're not talking hundreds of thousands. But, there's a lot of things that have to go into a station to make it safe for people to work in and to live in, because they're in that station 24 hours on the shift that they're working. So they're, they're in there, they're sleeping, they're eating there, there's a lot of different things that have to go into that.
Chairman, I've got something else to say.
I'm, I'm not saying that there's not some stations out there that can't be retrofitted, but they're going to be few and far between.
Well, I'm, I'm not saying necessarily retrofitting is getting commitments for the, the locations where they need to be, and, and convincing whoever to convert to a full-time station, a county station. And, you know, if you build one south of Lancaster, you're, you're going to build it within a mile of Elgin or Rich Hill, and to me, that, that, that doesn't make sense. You need to, the, the, the Elgin Station, whatever, would need to be consolidated into the, that main facility. Now, I, I know it's going to be, this is going to be a, 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 a very trying process.
It already is.
Yeah.
We're trying, it already is.
So what's the possibilities of merging some of these stations together, like Pleasant Valley and Indianland merge? Would we be more productive if we merged some of them together?
You've got a five-mile radius you have to keep.
We, we have to worry, we have to take into account the Insurance Service Organization, ISO, because that's where the rating comes from, from the county, and that's where your homeowner's insurance price is based. So, you know, if we did something, if we started trying to just merge stations just for, and I hate to use the word cost efficiency, because that, I don't think it really would be more cost efficient, we could end up losing the rating or going higher in the rating, and immediately, every homeowner in the county could end up with a doubling.
It's not a formula that, so right now, all of our stations have a certain distance apart, or required to have a certain distance apart.
Pretty much. Well, five road miles is what ISO uses as its determinant of where stations need to be. Thankfully, back in the 50s and 60s and early 70s, when the stations organized on their own, they all ended up being placed about right. There are a few little pockets in this county. One out towards Buford, on Dixie School Road, I think it is. The way River Chase is built, there's some in the back of River Chase. Edgewater is completely out of the five-road mile, but that didn't exist until, you know, the early 2000s. But other than that, there, all the, all the structures in this county are pretty much within five road miles of a fire station. So the placement of those buildings is critical as we move forward. That's why we just don't shut down fire departments, or shut up fire departments, or close them down. There needs to be a building where most every one of them's at. Now, back to the chairman's point, if the county owned those buildings, we could readily go in, raise one, bring back what we needed to, renovate, remodel, those are legal questions that you, you've got another attorney, I think, that's going to address some of that. But, I've advocated for the stations going ahead and turning their property over to the county, that's where our discussions are, and that has not been received well. And you all probably know that, I suspect.
We're going to destroy our volunteers if we try to do that.
You, you, that, that's not going to happen.
Darren, I, I've got a question. For us to slow this down a little bit, instead of making a great big jump into this all at one time, or whatever, could we do some, like a 12-hour shifts at some of these stations?
We may have.
In that way, we don't, they don't have to sleep, we don't have to make sleeping quarters for them?
There will need to be some kind of transitional plan that might be years-long, I, yes, sir. That absolutely would have to be. What, what I'm telling you today is not something we need to do tomorrow, but you got to know at some point, it's...
And we know it's coming, but I, I want us to use our volunteers as long as we can. We've got some great volunteers in this county, some of the best firefighters in, in this country, and I, I mean, I fought fire with a lot of them, but they're great, we don't need to lose them. Eventually, they're going to, this number's going to go down and down, which we'll have to do something, but I, I wanted to support our volunteers that we got now. Volunteer... And volun, and support their departments that they have. Give them what they need to get their apartments up to date. Or, uh, and, and, you know, and just try to maybe do some 12-hour shifts for some full-time people scattered around the county. And, and if you've got a fire at Elgin, uh, it has a fire, you got, you know, they can go to Rich Hill, or they can go to McDonald Green, or wherever, I mean, if they sit in there for that day. Y'all moving them around pretty good now, and you do a good job of that, and, and I really appreciate what y'all doing with that. And I support giving y'all more volunteer firemen. That's, that's the key to this thing right now, is getting more full-time volunteers. A full-time fireman, paid fireman, and continuing with our volunteers and taking care of them. Give them what they need, and let's look at 12-hour shifts for a while till we gradually go into this.
Once we know where you all want to head, and what you're going to fund, or willing to fund, then my staff will begin to try to plan and come up with a work schedule that works and, and does exactly what you're trying to do. Ultimately, we want 24-hour seven coverage. We may not can afford that for a while unless we put on the right kind of fee, and I don't know what that would be.
Unless and when we make this a priority, we're just going to, one day, we're going to wake up and say, oh my God, we got a $50 million bill coming, because we got all this we got to take care of. So, we need to start taking some small bites out of the apple right now, or we're going to, we're going to be eating a bushel of apples. And Ms. McGriff, I don't know if you understood what Mr. Player was saying earlier, but if you're outside of five miles of a fire district, distance, technically by ISO standards, you don't have a fire department covering your structure. So, you get the highest insurance rating that, that they will give.
What I didn't realize is that, uh, they were already at a certain distance. You know, I thought maybe it was somewhere within three, somewhere within two, that we could combine. But I do understand the fact that it, it, ISO rating, it affects that. And I think we talked about that before. But to go back to, um, I don't know who said it about, we need to plan now. Brian is, we don't want to wake up 10 years from now and realize that we can't do this. So, I'm sure either you or Dennis has some sort of strategic plan in place, or introducing to, uh, going to introduce to us, well, we've got to have a plan in place to, to meet the demands. Because the volunteers are going to go away. I mean, they're here now, but they are slowly going away throughout the county and every business. So, we need to have plans in place.
And Ms. McGriff, I appreciate that comment, because the components we're outlining tonight are the components of that. It's the extent to which you want to start on that, and that'll be the, hopefully, ending conversation today.
But, what's missing is, what, what timeframe? If we could just magically say this will happen at a certain date, is this, is this five years from now?
We're coming up, we're coming up to that.
We got to have an implementation plan, or...
So, Mr. Player can advance the next slide, we'll, uh, wrap up and have some more conversation.
All right, the, uh, everything we've talked about to this point, and, and we have addressed some of this about facilities, but facility needs are not in any of the numbers that I've given you at this point. Or, and that's facility construction, or facility renovation, upgrades, outfits, whatever, nothing is talked about in there. We know right now that the Indianland substation on Harrisburg Road has to be built. Uh, they're already in to works with, with the, uh, architects, moving forward on that as, as we speak. Um, hopefully, there'll be, by the time you get the millage, or whatever we end up doing finalized there, the money will be there to make the payment. I think the station two will be paid off, uh, and is it five more years Greg? Six years. And it, you know, by that time, we'll be probably into the new one, but hopefully, they'll have enough money in there to add their payment in for that substation. But there's also two more substations needed there. We need them today, probably not today, but if we don't start planning now, we won't have them. And within the next several years, based on the concentration of population, the number of, of developments that are already approved and being approved, those are all going to be needed. Uh, don't have placement on them, we don't have land for them. But part of that's going to be driven by the, the population, the density, also again, comes into the ISO, uh, discussion, because you get from a point to where if your, if your population density is a certain level, I cannot remember what that is today, but you move from five road miles to a mile and a half, or two miles for the station. Strength is because they take into account the fact that once you have a population density, you have a traffic issue, and timing is the thing that gets you there in order to make a, a difference. And remember, they're tied to insurance, so they're looking at how much we save as far as property, or property that is able to be repaired, and not completely rebuilt.
So, uh, substation, can you put a substation to get around the, having to have a station within five miles and affecting the ISO rating?
Substation on Harrisburg Road helps meet that five mile requirement, because on the northern part of what was the Pleasant Valley Fire District, those people were more than five road miles from the Possum Hollow Road Station. So, they, in essence, had no coverage as far as ISO was concerned. So, they built a single bay building on Harrisburg Road, right there close to Harrisburg Elementary, just to put a fire truck in there, so that they could get ISO coverage. But now they have the need, because of the density of the population, to be able to respond to those people.
I understand that.
Y'all, y'all got that completely...
I got, I got that, but that, this relates to...
It needs to be a staff station.
The consolidation size of five. If you consolidate two fire stations and you make one a substation, does that, uh, meet the requirements of the ISO?
I think I'm answering your question correctly, but as long as a fire truck sits in a station, and right now, it's five miles or less from your house, you have, ISO considers you to have fire protection. It doesn't matter whether it's called a substation or the main station.
Okay, well, you answered my question, but I would think a substation is a lot less expensive to build than a full-fledged station.
Everything we need to build is not a headquarters station, we wouldn't even attempt to do that. Uh, everything would be on the line of a substation, but it, basically, the number of bays is what sort of drives the cost, and that would be based on what kind of equipment we needed in that particular area that we built that building in.
But does a substation require 24-hour service? Uh, I mean, uh, all the bedrooms and all of that kitchen?
If you're going to put people in there, it does, yes.
But you have to put people in it?
It depends on if we're going to have round-the-clock coverage. I, that's a question that we're...
Just trying to figure out the ISO, uh...
I would think if the county builds a building, it would be short-sighted to build it without the capability to sleep people in it, because within 10 years for sure, you're going to have to have 24-hour coverage in most areas of this county. And that's going to require you to have career people in there. Your buildings, I would, hopefully, we build a building that would be good for at least 50 years. So, um, that, that's a whole nother discussion. Indianland, uh...
I'm sorry, because I, I don't know if your question was answered, or Charlene's. So, what I guess we're trying to figure out is, what are the total requirements needed for a station to meet the ISO requirements? You said a fire truck, does it need to have people in there?
It does not.
So, it does not need to have people in there, does it need to have the sleeping quarters?
No, no, sir.
So, all it needs, the only requirement is the fire truck?
That's to have a fire...
That is parked in that station?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And people in that district who can respond it, they don't have to be in the building?
Right, okay.
That's what we have right now, all over the county.
All right, let's keep moving.
Okay. The Fitch Study, again, Indianland Consolidated Fire District, I'm sorry. Indianland Fire District has current need for two more substations. I mentioned that, I want to make sure you remember that. I don't know where they will be, but there's two, there's need for two more, right now, within the next year or so, beyond that Harrisburg Road Station. And up there, I would, I would hope that you would want to build them to sleep people in, because that's going to be necessary based on all your traffic and your congestion and everything else. The Fitch Study recommended four stations strategically located, that's a reiteration of what we've already said, in the rest of the county, along with planning for countywide training facility. We, as we get more and more career firefighters, we need to be able to train them regularly. We go right now to York County to training facility, we go to Columbia. Indianland has a burn building there at their station one, but we need a good training facility that we can do all kinds of training, and all the rescue different, the different regiments of rescue. So, that needs to be on the, on the docket as well, is something we need to consider. And then we have the River Chase development. Uh, I think it's 250 permits, when they pull that 250th permit, technically by agreement, they owe us amount of money, and it should have been accruing interest over the years since that agreement was signed. There's a question as to how quickly we have to have a station for them. Also have a question about, is the land they want to give us buildable? Um, so, I don't think we want to pull the trigger on that right now, but that is something you need to understand. There is a requirement, if we take that money, that a station be built, right there in that area of River Chase. So, and some of you may have seen, I didn't see the agreements that went on that agreement, but, uh, some of y'all might have seen that. Next slide.
I mean, they have land, and it's right there at their development, so, I mean, you know...
Yeah, and they got to call it, they've got a specification for the name too.
And, and the other issue is that it is right on the, the district line for, for Van Wyck. So, if they were to move there, then it throws them all out of whack everywhere else in the district, or at other parts of the district, it'd be an out of ISO rating, so...
Yes. And, and I don't think there's anything in that agreement that says we have to name it any particular thing. I think...
Yeah, there is.
Is it?
There is in there, and, and it's supposed to be, it's triggered by the 250th house.
Yes, sir.
They're getting, I would think they're getting close to it.
I think there's two triggers. The 250th is a level where the county can require it. I'm not sure you all want to require it at that point. Uh, is, that's something Mr.?
I have, I have in the years past suggested we revisit that agreement.
Okay. The, uh, okay, we're on the county support for fire service currently. You've heard, you've funded for us 12 career firefighters. Right now, they're running eight-to-five schedule, Monday through Friday. Where, as I said, we're going to probably amend that to a 10-hour schedule, and it makes it more, uh, amenable to them, it gives them a little bit more family time, even though they're working 10 hours a day, and we'll stagger them, so that we're still covering the Monday through Friday. If we get a few more firefighters, we'll go into the Saturday and Sunday. We probably won't have the, the full complement, but we would have some available then. But that'll be based on people, that goes back to what you were talking about, Mr. Mosteller. Um, working with a flexible plan coming forward as we transition. All of it's transitioning to career, it's just a method of how we're going to end up doing it. Um, emergency management and training staff and equipment. Emergency management is a standalone agency, but we all work together. That, the, the emergency, I am the emergency manager of the county, fire rescue director of the county. So, the fire service is the manpower that emergency management uses to do the things that we need to do when we need manpower. But we're also a good funding source for, as we move equipment out of the emergency management function, we put it into the stations. So, uh, there, there's a good symbiotic relationship between the two. That's why we included them on that line together. Uh, the training staff works in the entire county, and then, of course, all of the equipment in the county you furnish is part of the budget. Again, capital support for the apparatus. Once the, uh, last firefighter assistance grants, tankers, are gotten out of the system, um, the county will have purchased everything that's in fire stations at this point, and, and owns everything. We pay the utility cost, and that's water, sewer, gas, if it's available, and it is pretty much everywhere now, uh, and electricity, regardless, there's, there's three companies in the county, uh, and so we have accounts. The station has the account, but the county pays them. Those bills come straight to the county. They have a contract with Lancaster, we pay for three positions there. Uh, and Kershaw, we pay for one position there. They have their contract, uh, on the two that they furnish themselves. Indianland Fire District, uh, we place one position there. We do not place anybody at the Van Wyck Fire District. And, of course, Van Wyck, the town itself, has no firefighters either. Uh, the total general fund support for the tax dollars is $4,869,223. That's the three budgets that I administer, uh, hands-on all the way. Um, that's not including your Indianland budget, it's not including a Van Wyck budget, and of course, it's not including the Kershaw budget, they do themselves. It's just the contract budget that I administer. So, when you see the breakdown there as to what goes into that $4 million. And with that, I think Mr. Marsdahl is going to take over.
If you would go to the next slide, Ms. Simpson. So, talking about the options going forward, so, yes, we need a plan. We've been talking about the Fitch Study from 2016. Certainly walking into this, hearing the needs, and seeing where we are in our strength with the volunteer, being the primary way we're going to service our county going forward, but we need a five-to-year plan. If we know it's going to take four years to get some of our fire apparatus, that factors into this as well. But the thought about future stations, looking at growth. Um, but what we have, our options now, is to continue to see general fund property tax support. We saw how much we're spending in those three budgets, of 4.9 million, and we're also using the general property tax to pay off the bonds. That, we can continue that. We can do the capital purchases, as we said there. Um, but also, considering establishing, if you want additional fire districts that have fee districts, we now have two, with the Van Wyck and the Indianland. Or, as we've danced around a little bit, about the fire property tax millage by having a millage just for fire service. When we're talking about the amount of dollars it now takes for the apparatus, and the amount of dollars it takes for a station, and I'll throw out a number. We'll just say roughly $6 million for a station, not including land acquisition. And if we ultimately need four stations over that period, again, we can decide if they need staffing for sleeping quarters, everything, but I don't want to be short-sighted on this as our population continues to grow. So, if you take $6 million times four stations there, you take the apparatus request, that doesn't even then touch the staffing request, which we just saw. If we do three shifts at each of the four stations, that's again, future. If we want to head towards that within 10 years, we've got to decide what is the funding method going to be for that. And so, Mr. Flynn's on the, um, presentation here, because we want to highlight again, or make sure you understand the full options available to you. So, if we go to the next slide, Ms. Simpson. Um, here is, I'll ask some, Mr. Flynn, who's helped us with the Indianland merger, if you recall, to give you some of these available options that would, could lead to a millage support for fire, which would not put the apparatus purchase and the capital purchase necessarily on the property tax. And so, we'll delineate that for you a little bit, but Mr. Flynn, if you want to walk through this slide?
Sure. Um, so, guys, there are a couple of options that exist at state law, and we, we kind of talked about this at a high level when we went through the consolidation on the Indianland Fire District. But, um, generally speaking, uh, the county does not have a ton of independent special purpose districts. But when the county received the ability to provide fire service under the Home Rule Amendments to the Constitution in '73, as a part of the general constitutional amendments and the Home Rule Amendments to the Constitu, or to the, to the statutory directives, uh, that were also given to the county, the ability to create special purpose districts was prohibited by the legislature, but some of that power has been subsequently delegated to the individual county councils to make decisions on staffing and providing essential service functions in particular quarters within the county boundaries. And so, historically, the way that the county has operated, and y'all have gone through that entire analysis, um, with, with the other members of staff, uh, and kind of their background, you have the, the consolidated district up in the neck, uh, that has the only full-time. You also have the city of Lancaster, and then you have this smattering of volunteer, uh, departments throughout the county. Um, all of those departments, except for, uh, the consolidated, uh, Indianland Department, are effectively supported solely through the county's general fund. Um, and so that means that when you've borrowed money in times past, it's been on, in the county's name, and it's been secured by the county's taxes, and it's been, um, uh, subject to the county's 8% debt limit. Some of the options that we're proposing, because some of the things that also exist at state law, give us the ability to create disparate districts, or unique taxing districts within the county, um, to provide solely fire service, and to tax those particular areas at different levels based on the service that they receive. Um, and so there are a couple of different vehicles that we can do that through. And so, for example, uh, one option is to create a countywide fire tax district. Uh, under the Home Rule Amendments to the Constitution, you can do that, and you can do that by ordinance of county council, without a referendum, without any other petition action, other than county council making the decision to do so, um, and create the new taxing district by ordinance. You just can't include any of the incorporated areas of a municipality. So, you'd have to leave out the, uh, the town of Van Wyck, Whack, you have to leave out the city of Lancaster, but you could create a separate tax district for just the unincorporated areas. Now, there is some ability to contract within those municipal, uh, service areas, and we've done that before. But this idea of the countywide tax district is very similar to what, uh, your, your neighbor to the, uh, I guess Northwest does, uh, over in York County. They have a... They have a countywide fire tax district that supports their volunteer organizations that they fund capital through that organization. The benefit of doing that is under the Constitution, that entity is a separate legal entity for, for taxing purposes. It's also a separate legal entity for bonding purposes, and that means that the debt of any general obligation bonds issued through the fire taxing district, while it's ultimately secured by the county's tax base, is explicitly exempt from the county's 8% debt limit. And so effectively means you create a new borrowing vehicle to fund capital throughout the county as you see fit. And so it's not obviously reducing taxes, but it's not burdening the county's 8% debt limit because, you know, you have other county functions that you otherwise have to take on. That's the reason a lot of folks do it. A lot of folks also do it simply so they can have a line item on the tax bill that funds fire service in the unincorporated areas of the county. And so that's something that you could ultimately do by ordinance. Also, the alternative, and I know it's been talked about a little bit back and forth among council on the dais tonight, is the idea of potential consolidation of districts. Now, for a variety of reasons involving ISO and the practical considerations of merging substations, that may not work, but the idea of potentially merging service areas similar to what was done with Indianland and, and, you know, more, more recently, or creation of a fire service district like the one done for the, the town of Van Wack, could be done, and could be done on an individualized basis to provide distinct fire service functions in that area. That would be a way to provide, you know, if there was a certain area of your community that said, "We no longer feel like we can be fully supported by an exclusive volunteer service department, and we're looking for a way to hire our own independent, full-time, maybe not go to a fully professional staff, but have some type of hybrid," as you've talked about, would be to create a separate tax district within the county for a particularized area to provide services just to that area. And then there are, there are ways to potentially comp, combine all of those, where you have an unincorporated area, fire service area, you have a variety of independent fire service areas that you create additionally by ordinance similar to what we did in Indianland. And all of those independent districts are going to have their own independent ability to borrow money and not encumber the county's 8% debt limit. So, you know, obviously, none of this, you know, gets us to the position where we're getting a free lunch, but if we're looking for options to create new vehicles to levy millage or put on new fire fees, or to independently issue general obligation debt secured by ad valorem tax millage within those particular areas without separately encumbering or burdening the county's 8% debt limit, this is an alternative for doing that.
I've got a question.
Yes, ma'am.
I know nothing about firefighting, but he mentioned something about merging service areas, but not stations. Kind of explain that to me, whoever can explain it.
Mr. Flynn will explain that to you.
Yes, ma'am. So I'll, I'll take a stab at it, and I'll certainly let the fire chief speak to, to the ISO side of it. But obviously, we've, we've talked about kind of the independent five-mile radius that you have to have for ISO purposes. I'm not saying that that would change, but what, what would make sense is, for example, if you had a particular fire department that, you know, was, was, you know, closed. And so I, I don't pretend to understand all the, the ins and outs of, of fire service in Lancaster County, but if, if Buford and Unity, for example, as volunteer departments, and I'm completely pulling those out of thin air, but if the two of those entities said, "Hey, operationally, it makes more sense for us to, you know, share a pumper truck and a ladder truck, or, you know, have an emergency services facility that works within ISO, but we also want to independently tax ourselves," you could create a consolidated taxing district that would levy taxes only within the areas of Unity and Buford that would then support only those areas, but the people in those areas would be paying for that higher level of service through an additional levy of a tax or fee exclusively for their purpose. And so when I talk about consolidation, I'm really talking about it on the financial management side, much less so on the operating side.
So, so if I may, Lawrence, and, and you can disagree with me if you want, but we've been through this before. I think there's a little confusion using the words service areas, districts, and stations. So what Mr. Flynn is talking about, what we're talking about in these slides, he's talking about right now with these service areas, you can, like he said, consolidate stations together in a service area. They're usually called fire service areas or fire service districts. There's also another level which you don't have in this county, which is special purpose districts, which are created by the legislature. Those can't be created anymore with Home Rule unless you're crossing county lines. Then you can create something like that, but it would be totally independent from you all, all the way around. So I think the use, and I think, I think Mr. Player said, the use of the word district, stations, et cetera, kind of gets interchanged, but in our legal world, the use of district really goes with what we're talking about with an area, like he's talking about for a fee district or a taxing district. So when you're talking, it's two separate things, so, and it, it is difficult. It took me many years over the course of my legal career to start learning all this fire stuff as well, and that's, that's where I think a little bit of the confusion comes in from the legal side of it and how you're doing things, because you consolidate areas together, but that may bring stations together within those areas at the same time, if that makes any sense whatsoever.
None.
And, and let me-
I think that's a really important addition, and I thank the county attorney for, for making it. You know, the, the thing that I think everyone has to remember is right now, you have 17 independently operating fire departments within the county. Each one of those departments has multiple resources, multiple assets, multiple substations in certain circumstances. Those departments continue to exist on paper. You can decide how you want to mix and match them as you otherwise see fit. Of those 17 departments, one of them, yeah, I guess there, there really is 18 with the city of Lancaster, only, only two of them are professional. And so you have the city of Lancaster, and you have the Indianland. Those are the only two that hire full-time, independent fire, fire officials that are actually supported by taxes. If any of those other remaining 16 departments wanted to go to a more professional model or to hire additional members because they couldn't support volunteers, getting back to kind of the long-term plan of what you want to do for facilities, capital, and long-term operations, a way of doing that is to create these independent districts, and you could keep, you could do theoretically 16 independent taxing districts, or you could consolidate those based on effectively trying to pick off the strongest area of tax base. Because no matter how big the district is, what we're ultimately concerned about and what those taxpayers are most concerned about are having lots of different taxing entities. The more disparate your area is, the less density you have, you know, based on the way the county has grown, the, the more higher level of tax levy you're going to be able to put in place to be able to support that function. And so when we've dealt with this in times past, we typically try and find ways to consolidate entities that, you know, basically can, can, you know, benefit one another. That's the benefit of the, the countywide taxing district, is that you get the benefit of putting taxes in place in the Indianland area, which has obviously a much higher density of taxpayers that will all help offset other costs in other areas that are not as economically dense or as robust from a tax standpoint. So that's a benefit of that unincorporated area tax district.
I don't think we want 16 different fire districts. I, I don't think that's an option. They take that one off table.
That last statement will not sit very well with my constituents.
Fair enough. Again, this is about giving you the options to figure out how we potentially fund some of these big costs that you have. And so the, the good news is you have options. The hard news is that, is that y'all ultimately get to make that decision.
Well, you know, y'all, I, I still think, well, step one, and that would be, we obviously have to have a facility at some point to get, to get to the four that we'll eventually need in X number of years, whatever that might be, since nobody seems to want to define things by time. But our first step would be to find a location, and I think Darren and all the staff have to figure out where that would best be integrated without alienating our volunteer service, service people. And then my thought process is, if you have four manned stations, we could still have the volunteer stations around it, but you'd have, and again, I'm just forgetting Indianland for a moment, but if you're just talking about a normal Lancaster County, south of five, four stations manned with people eventually one day, and if we still had volunteers, we'd still have the volunteer stations out there as satellite offices or whatever you called it, up, it's substations. So I think the first question is, where, where, where can we do one? When do we need to do it by? What's the manpower needed to get to that point in time? What's the operating cost? Before we talk about how we're going to pay for it, because this paying for it stuff is so theoretical, I can't hardly wrap my mind, my mind around it.
Everything you depend, it's going to depend on the funding.
No, but, but we, we got to find out what we need first to figure out a way to fund it.
Exactly.
And then the second step would be, where would that second department, that building go, the next building? And, and what surrounding, and of course, you'd be thinking about all four at one time, obviously, but, but you'd have to pick one to start with, because we can't fund all four. But, but, but I, I, right now, cannot segregate my mind what's going to happen next year, year after next, the third year, fourth year, fifth year. And then, of course, all this still comes back to, we don't have a pro forma budget to compare our other expenses to, to see how this would fit in, to begin to think about how we should fund what needs to be funded.
Yeah, I would, I'm not sure about the long term, but I, I think in the short term, the Fitch study has recommended that we hire two firefighters a year, and as Mr. Mosteller is, is talking about, go into some 12-hour shifts for the next, to me, the first stage should be, is expanding our battalions that were, when they have 12 firefighters now to, to start that expansion, because we need, we need personnel more than we need buildings or, or fire trucks right now. And I think you can, as you mentioned, they can work 12-hour shifts without having to, 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 to sleep in those. That's not going to be the long-term solution, but that's, I, I think that's my suggestion.
But, and that's good, Steve, because that, that's the, that's the stair stepping to get to where whatever phase one's got to be at whatever time in the future, that we got to have it, you know, based on population growth and things of that nature. I, you know, I agree with that 100%.
I think you're going to be-
I'm going to agree with Alan again.
Lord, Hamburg.
Lightning is going to strike.
It, it's getting close. I thought I heard thunder outside.
It was getting close, it's 5:23, and we hadn't, we hadn't, we haven't went through our jizz.
Wait a minute, let me say to Steve, I agree that we've got to do it in phases, but when you're doing it in phases, we've got to have the information that we need to make the decision. We need to, we need to have plans, implementation plan or timing, you know, what it's going to cost, where we're going to put it. You know, that's what I need to make a decision, is to, to have a five, 10-year, whatever plan you need, but give us what we need to make a good decision, because you're giving us information, but you're not giving us a plan.
Well, I'm, I'm going to up the ante a little bit. I don't think hiring two firefighters a year is going to get us anywhere close to where we need to be. We probably need to be at least hiring four per year, and even at that, that's still going to be 12 years before we can get up to 48 firefighters, but, you know, it would, it would get more people on the street quicker, which is what we need.
Yeah, I just did it.
But then you, then you would just price out, year one, four firefighters, year two, four more firefighters, and maybe some other apparatus and operating costs to go with it. Year three, whatever, we, we, we make the plan, we hire the experts to build the building in year five.
Now, remember y'all saying this when that budget hit us in front of us. Don't be kicking that can, because we know what we need, we need to move forward and get it done. If we need four firefighters, let's do it.
And for the record, I agree with you.
All right, let's, uh, uh-
Can I just ask one clarifying question?
This is a complicated, long-term issue that is only going to get more complicated.
Let, let me ask one clarifying question. If we go through the countywide tax district, would that be in addition to the rooftop fees that an Indianland district is already paying?
Julie, yes, I mean, yeah, because looking at the-
When you double dip, and boy, that's not very popular.
I don't think that's an option.
But let me say why, because, well, it depends on the millage rate you want to do, but yes, I mean, to do a countywide millage has to be for kind of above and beyond, but for the countywide millage would be for capital. And so when you talk about needs, priorities, and timelines, I would say the substation-
You would have to adjust the fire mill, the fire fee down.
We'd have to reduce it.
You would have to reduce it.
Yeah, it would be adjusted.
You'd have to fix it.
Well, no, you're talking, you're not talking apples to oranges right now. Dennis is talking about capital expenditures, and we're talking mostly personnel expenditures. I mean, I, I, I think to ease the existing fire stations angst about all this, it would be better if we looked at having a Indianland consolidated district and then another district that covers all the rest of the county. That way, it, it-
Yes.
Sort of covers what you've heard from firefighters saying, you know, "We don't want to be in this district where, you know, we're going to be paying money, but then it's all going to be going to the big giant." That sort of evens the playing field.
But remember, right now, the Indianland fire fee does not cover capital and does not cover a new station. And so in order to get new stations and the apparatus, we have to determine if that's going to come from bond, as we've been doing. So that's why I'm saying, as of now, the Indianland fire fee is generally paying for the enhanced staffing and their salaries. And so that's why I don't see it lowering.
But if we go to a millage-type system, it's better because then you're going to be putting the fire fees on the people that are getting the service. So if you've got a million-dollar house, you're going to be paying more through millage than you are through the fire fee. If you've got a $10 million business, then the business is going to be paying what the millage is based for that business.
But currently, the firefighters in the rest of the county and partially in Indianland are paid out of the general fund. Indianland pays probably the highest percentage into the general fund and tax dollars in any other part of the county, so you're still going to double dip them. We do have it.
You have the most suspense.
So to, to close the conversation for the day, if you'll go to the next slide, Ms. Simpson, keep going, one more, please. So the thoughts, so talking about what is the year plan, five to 10 years, we do know because of this timeline for apparatus, if we're talking four years out, we've got to make some moves on the apparatus. And that is going to determine in our determination, the next six months, if we want to do that with GO bond, with general obligation bonds, and what is your threshold? Is a $10 million bond what you're looking at? And again, we're going to give you the spreadsheet with the different list of apparatus per station, but this is an immediate need in terms of knowing we have a four-year lag time in order to get apparatus. But also, then we think about how we fund the stations, if we're going to start looking for land or start looking at this model, again, we need to determine if that's going to be through general obligation bond or if you want to use a millage to do that. So these are kind of in tandem, so what we will do is come back to you in January with more of this detailed information and try to give you a year line timeline, but I want you to have this full picture to kind of understand what we bring to you in January. But I will tell you, as you look at year one, year two kind of things, I think an apparatus purchase, whatever your threshold is, has got to be completed or underway within the next 12 months, and whether that's-
I think, I think we'll all agree with that. My only, on the apparatus, my only concern is, I know in the past, we have got some discounts for paying early and all that, but I, I have an issue with sending a company $8 billion and they're four years out without it being some kind of bond, the escrow, escrow or something like that, like a real estate, you know.
And that, and that actually may work in our favor, and I'll have this information for you. It could be, knowing the lag time, that we may have to put down 25% of the purchase. And so we actually could do that out of fund balance and save the conversation about millage or GO for later on. That actually may help the conversation a little bit, depending upon the financial arrangement. arrangement, given the situation, for apparatus. But anyhow, we will come back to you, but I want to make sure you understood the dynamics of what comprises this. And if you're looking at a five- or 10-year horizon, that informs how we think about this going forward.
I just want to see this information put in the format of a plan, where we can follow it, and we can know the timeframe. If we've not met that timeframe, we need to know why.
A timeframe be per year?
Yeah.
I'd like to get a paper copy of this, too.
Yeah, let's take a five-minute break, and we will try to.
No way you're going to have a short meeting, looking at all these topics, all lengthy topics.
Thank you, Mr. Flynn, we appreciate it.
Yeah, take five minutes, let's get started back.
Gross land area to calculate density. So we've talked about it before of places that are technically MDR, so they should be 2.5 units per acre, but they feel a lot more dense than 2.5. So how you calculate density depends a lot on what that looks like. So gross versus net density is something that has come up a couple of times. It's came up with the interim ordinance that we kind of bounced around for about a year. Came up when White and Smith was here back in September of last year. And then again, it's a conversation that'll come up with the MDR and cluster text amendments and has come up with those as well. So one of the things that we see a lot is cluster subdivision particularly is one of the topics of conversation that comes up. And again, I'll let Allison handle that in her presentation. But you've got about a MDR technically allows 10,000 square foot lot size, which if you were doing rough math, you would say you can get easy four lots out of an acre and you're good to go. You don't really get four lots out of an acre. You're lucky if you get 2.5. But so the two kind of primary options again are gross density versus net density. And there's a lot of options you can go within each of those routes, but they look very different. So you're used to seeing gross density. So the 1.5s, 2.5s, that's something that you typically are used to seeing, but sometimes the net density of those same developments is closer to say four or five units per acre. So gross density allows more flexibility in site development. So it's just how you maneuver and how you fit your units. But you say max number of units you can get out of this lot. But if you can figure out how to still meet minimum lot size and get these kind of configured in, this is the max number of units you can get out of this lot. Net density better correlates to the visual impact of density and how it feels when you're driving through that development. So some communities regulate, well, most communities regulate either maximum or gross or maximum gross density or maximum net density. Some communities do a maximum gross density and a minimum net density so that you're forcing kind of more compact development and leaving more open space. So that's usually relates to a smaller lot size. You're forcing things into a smaller area, but they have larger open spaces associated with them. So that's just something to keep in mind when you're talking about all those different paths that you can go down with gross or net. So a couple of examples we pulled from current projects in Lancaster County. Queensbridge, you've got roughly, well, you've got 249 lots, which gross density when you do the calculations is about 1.59 dwelling units per acre. Now, this is an MDR subdivision. So technically, they should be able to get 2.5. They really came out with 1.5 once you factored in different things.
I didn't have.
Queensbridge? No, sir. The next one is Treetops and it does.
I know that.
Tried to give an example of both, but yes. So Queensbridge comes out at 1.5 dwelling units per acre when technically under their zoning, they could get up to 2.5, but it's just not going to happen with the roads, the stormwater, the open space requirements, things of that nature. But the net density for that same development, if you look at a pod back in the back and you just calculate net density. So net density is when you're only really looking at the built area. The net density of that kind of back pod is closer to 4.5 dwelling units per acre. So that's, it feels much more dense than 1.5, but the development as a whole is still at a 1.5 gross density. So this is what, these are some street views from within Queensbridge. So again, it feels a lot more dense than you would typically think if you said 1.5 dwelling units per acre. Treetops, the one that comes up maybe most frequently in these discussions. Again, you're looking at actually 1.2 dwelling units per acre, closer to 1.3. But you're factoring in all that open space back in the back, the kind of lake pond area, things of that nature into that overall density calculation. This was a cluster development, is a cluster development. And their net density, again, just looking at a pod, not trying to kind of go pod by pod, but just looking at one pod within Treetops, you've got a 5.12 dwelling units per acre kind of average because you can get the smaller lot sizes in cluster. So you're looking at the 5,000 instead of the 10,000 square foot minimum lot sizes, things of that nature. So again, it feels much more dense than what you would immediately think of if you saw it based off of what our density calculations look like. So really, the question that we have to give to White and Smith is some direction on whether you want to calculate density using gross acreage or if you want to calculate density using net, only the kind of built things. So again, those are going to look really, really different than the numbers that you're used to seeing, but net may be a more accurate representation as to how the development feels, whereas gross is going to be kind of true overall development. Happy to answer questions, but that's kind of the direction.
If you go with the net acreage, your density, we don't have good land to develop. I mean, all the good halfway good plots are gone. If you, if you do that, you're going to get densities down to one, one unit per acre or whatever, and you're, you're, you're going to have zero development. And one thing I'm looking up here, I want you to, I'm trying to understand this current MDR requirements leave property on the table. What is this?
That's after me. That's on me. I didn't do it.
Okay, that's, okay. All right.
But yeah, they are, they are related conversations, but one is kind of looking towards how we want to develop the new UDO. Do we want to stick with kind of the gross acreage calculations that we've been doing? Do we want to switch over to net? Again, if we switch to net, the only way that that works is the net numbers, what you're used to seeing is like a 2.5 would have to be closer to a four or a five. MDR would be more, more than likely a four or a five net density calculation.
Well, you think you take Treetops, you know, the open space you got, that is really dense and the, and I think it's blatantly wrong to be able to use floodplain as part of a gross acreage calculation. And, and a lot of these developers tote that as a 1.2 units per acre. But in reality, as you showed on the stride, it's more, some of those are six or seven houses per acre on the small lots. And the streets are really, really narrow. That buffer that runs along 521, that buffer, you know what that buffer is, Ashley? It's a, it's a red bank that goes up like that. They cut the trees right to a property line. And that red buffer, all it's got on it is a few scraggly little pine trees. So I think when you're using these big tracks like that, they should not be allowed to disturb the buffer around the outside. But I'm advocating that we not use gross acreage. One of the reasons that they get to use, they hunt out his bad land and they use all the good land to jam all the houses they can.
If you do that, you're going to have to raise the density to five or six units per acre. Same thing.
Well, that's better. At least it's a real, it's a real truth then. And I also think that the high density cluster development should be in a zoning by itself, not in amongst MDR.
So I think there's also, there's some alternatives. Again, there's a million different, different directions you can go within net or within gross. You could go gross and then say, we're not, we're going to hold back a percentage of the floodplain area. So you can calculate gross acreage. You have to leave out 50% of your floodplain. I think that's something that we threw out as, as part of the.
I agree with that.
The flex ordinance, I think that's something that we looked at. So then it gets you closer to the, the real number, but it's not, it still allows the development community to get used to that kind of 2.5. It's still the number that you're used to seeing. So there's, there's ways to go through with, in net, you could say, we're still going to allow you to include your open spaces. So there's ways you could go with either of them. They're just going to look very different as to than, than what you're used to if you go net.
I guess in my mind, the way that I see this is what is the ultimate question of what we as a council want to see in our communities? Forget the numbers, forget the density, forget all that. Do we want to see houses side by side squished together? Or do we want to see a more pleasant community that offers better experiences for our constituents and our residents? Once we make that final determination, whether we're looking for our constituents or for the developers, then we can make determinations on how we classify this. Because I think you're right. I think how we classify between net and gross, it, it's not going to matter. The density then becomes a question on each one and how we look at it. But the ultimate question is what do we want these neighborhoods to look like? And I think that's the appropriate question that we need to be asking ourselves.
density of growth north of five and different south of five because I'm sure north of five is going to want net growth, the net. South of five, we can afford to do pretty much a variety of things.
You can, but as I've said before, take a look at the panhandle before you decide what to do and decide if you like it. Because I don't have a problem with, if that's what you want to split it, and we can split the requirements south of five and north of five. I mean, I think that would be, I'm not opposed to that. Yeah, I do, I don't have a problem with that. But I think in the, at least in my, in my district, I think we, there's not an appetite for high density developments such as Treetops.
I think that Mr.
We said south of, we said Indianland, Central and Southern. We did.
You know, the, the logical thinking would be if, if you had smaller lots with more density, that you could have less expensive housing there because you're not paying as much for the land. But in reality, what you've got is, you know, Treetops is not quote unquote an affordable housing development unless you retired and you've got plenty of money. So that's, that's the crux of the matter is, you know, if, if you allow extra density, but you're building $500,000 houses on, on those lots, then you're not getting to the affordability factor that you're talking about.
It, it, it depends on several factors because Treetops is a little different because the extent of the amenities that they are offering as well, which increases the overall value of the development. I think we're talking about a multitude of things and mixing them all around. So I, I think the question of net versus gross, again, it's either and or it doesn't, it doesn't matter.
I don't think it matters.
Yeah, because you change the numbers for the net density and you increase it and it's the same as you would have under the gross area. It'd be cleaner, you could see it. So I guess my point is I don't, I don't care as much.
And I know Mr. Graham is concerned, and I've had some concerns with, with projects like this where, I don't know, is, is a lot of that low land around those ponds and all?
There's.
Being able to use over 50% of your floodplain to count as your open space. I think something like that is, that's what I've been assuming that being Mr. Graham had been talking about.
We have. I mean, they've got Six Mile Creek that runs down through there, and that is a real floodplain. If you remember, that developer tried to give that land to the county.
Yeah, so I, that's.
He gave it in Roseland.
That's my thoughts on density. All right.
Yeah, so.
What you going to take away, Ashley?
Yeah, so to summarize just quickly, the PDDs I think will help some with the affordability stuff. You can talk about how to kind of play around with that. So that's something that we've already talked about. PDDs are a route that we're going down or PUDs, whatever we end up calling them. We also are going to have some kind of zoning districts that don't currently exist. It'll be in the new UDO, so you get another variation. So that'll be helpful. From this, I think the key takeaway is probably to go down the net route, it sounds like, just as far as putting numbers in front of you. I think that was something that staff had thought was probably going to be the direction. We were just a little hesitant to come before you and say, hey, it's going to be six units per acre now because it looks very different than what you're used to hearing.
No, but I think that's the real deal.
That's the, and that's the question. What do we want these neighborhoods to look like and how are we going to identify them? So if it's six units per acre, are we going to then reclassify those as higher density, then have new definitions for high density, medium density and low density?
Yes.
And that's when we start looking at the different areas and what we can offer. Because I agree with you. I don't think that Indianland, especially my district, we don't want any more high density.
Not at this point. I mean, the infrastructure can't handle that. I mean, it's just.
See, the, the, why I'm saying a lot more growth could come south of number five because there are very few MDR parcels left in the panhandle. And council has turned down the last five rezonings and I, I just don't see.
But there is land up there that is ready for development, and I believe there's some in the pipeline that would have, if council hadn't changed its voting pattern, that they would have already been approved and they're coming. I mean, they're coming. That's what they want. That's what the developer wants. And they're developers in a business and they might or may not have the best interest of the community at heart, but they are responsible to their owners and their shareholders and they want to maximize their returns by putting as much housing on the land as they can.
So I'll just say it as part of my swan song, but I think the goal for staff, at least right now, has been we are hoping to get you a UDO that gives you a lot more options than you have right now. And then it's going to be up to you all as council members to either approve those in your areas or not approve those in your areas. But we want to at least create the options and then let you all handle where you want to place those.
Good luck in your.
Thank you.
adventure in life.
And you did keep it short. You did good.
Move on down to the discussion of 2023-1865 regarding amendment to UDO related to district standards of medium density residential MDR.
Yes, sir. I can go quick too, if you'd like. Just do, just do what we ask. It's, okay, can, still having trouble? Okay. So to recap the overview, we've had complaints on both sides of the MDR that both it is not good enough and too good, that residents in Indianland in particular have had complaints to, to y'all about there's too much residential development in their area. And we have heard complaints about housing, which are lumped into three topics. The challenge of finding new affordable housing for the working class and ability of new residents to add on to their existing homes due to lack of yard space or yards for accessory units and pools and et cetera. And then a developer interest in creating more lots for sale or development. We went through some of the housing data, updated this for this month, that we still have a significant amount of square footage per house. You can see in the chart there that the one bedroom houses had a significant jump in price from last year to this year. The two bedroom houses are actually going down now by trend in October. The growth on three and four and five and additional bedrooms is still going up a little bit. And that's for new houses, for median home prices sold. Rocket Home Mortgage.
And I'm, I'm sorry, and do you have the pace? So how quickly homes are selling as well, or how many homes have sold during that same time period?
I didn't redo the pace for that because it's slowing down. Right now it is.
Houses for that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That, that's, that's exactly what I was trying to get to because if you're looking at the October numbers, they're dropping. I would imagine the pace is also dropping and that's leading to the valuation drops.
Right.
There's also.
Yep.
Yeah, and also that, that price is probably very different in the panhandle and.
That's an average.
Yes, that's what I, that's my whole point. It's probably very different.
There's pressure.
Oh, we have average.
Okay.
The, the average home price in Lancaster County in June, the 405,000, that was from the New Home Institute or the Institute of Home Builders, National Institute of Home Builders. So that's the new homes. This, as of June, shows where we were pacing, we're pacing down for new home construction, but we're still maintaining an average in the county of over 3,000 square feet per home, which is huge.
That includes porches and garages too now.
And townhomes.
Yeah.
So, yeah, it's.
Houses, square footage, square footage.
Right. Then you got to have your man cave somewhere, potentially not parking it in there. And then the affordability of single new family home construction, this is the National Association of Home Builders information, medium new, median new home price in South Carolina and the household income needed to qualify for that. In the state, 75% of the, the state cannot afford a new home. 76% of the Charlotte area cannot afford a new home. In that report, they also said for every $1,000 that is added to the cost, you're pricing more people out. A couple other things that we wanted to, I wanted to add into this that I got a hold of today. This is the community profile for Lancaster County from the Department of Employment and Workforce. We have somewhere between 41,000 and 43,000 employees in Lancaster County. There are people that are employed in Lancaster County, but we have 94,000 people living here. We have 43% of our workforce supporting the rest of them with the income and the income tax and things like that. Those 43,000 people need to be able to get an affordable home in order to maintain their residence here. There are higher numbers of people with jobs and working in the surrounding counties, in particular York County, where we see a lot of the affordable workforce, affordable housing going. It's a real challenge to make sure that we have that option available for residents in the county. So we assumed with this that we, there was a severe shortage of different types of housing. Housing costs are impacted in part by the cost of the lot and the cost to develop. There was, in the Home Builders' Report, they talked about how lots were still hard to find for developers and they needed supply because demand was high. And then they balanced the code, we recommend that a balanced code for mid-level housing and subdivision to address these issues. The missing middle housing that you might have heard about in lots of reports in the last few months, we talked about in this as an option to add flexible types of housing to address this missing middle. The only one we addressed in the actual ordinance recommendation was duplex. If there are others that you'd like to see, I'd be even more than happy to do that.
We need to have a discussion on duplexes.
Yep, okay. We added parking plan requirements for overflow and tried to get parking off of the streets and onto the private properties, which included expanding the distance between the property line and the gar, and the garage. We talked about working as a, with a pilot project to try out new types of housing and to require phasing to reduce mass grading, which was also mentioned as an issue. Developers have been asking us for more flexibility for, since I've been here. And developers where I was before also asked us for more flexibility. So we looked at incorporating more flexibility. So these are the questions that, that were provided, some comments and some replies to them about the ordinance that we proposed. Reducing rear yard setbacks limits private space, but we talked about making the setback more flexible so that folks could have an accessory building behind there or the house could be adjusted as need be. Because one of the complaints we get from people that are develop, are building their, their homes or want to put something in their backyard is that the developer has not left them enough space. So we recommended the extra five foot off of that. The rear setbacks are a minimum. If a developer wanted to add more space in the backyard, they could. We talked about that some, there was concern about all duplexes will be rental units. But we have a need for rental units. I, I don't, I, I understand that there are some people that think that rental units are a bad thing. That's not from a planning standpoint. We need, we have many types of families in the community and they all need an option for homes or housing. In addition, duplexes provide for multi-generational ownership. They also provide for economy increase for somebody that's living on one side to rent the other. Is that a stop talking wave or?
I mean, you, you need to, that's going to allow a duplex by right anywhere in the MDR district. We don't have traditional blocks.
It's already allowed by right. We added into it with some design standards to make it more palatable.
It's allowed by right, but isn't there some?
It's one face, one block face, one duplex per block face in the MDR.
I don't know of any duplexes that have been built. I mean, I'm, I'm trying to.
I don't either, and that's a problem.
Isn't there some requirements, special requirements for duplex?
I'll go back and look at it real quick, but the way that we laid it out is already Dwelling, two-family, MDR, PB and HDR, two-family dwellings shall be limited to one per block face. That's the current code.
You said HDR?
MDR, PB and HDR. We don't have any HDR. We haven't in the book, but yeah.
You talk about the garage being set back. I, I can't support that.
I understand.
Traditional design is the, if you're concerned about affordability, when you push that garage back, any space that would be above that garage is not usable. Additionally, you, you create another 20 foot of, of driveway that's going to cost. But I, I've looked through several plan books online and the, you know, that's just, that's, that's not a design that's used in this area. And, you know, if they want that in the panhandle, that's fine, but I want a more traditional design where I.
Yeah, we do. But we do want to address the, the on-street parking.
Yeah, we do.
I want to know, I want to know, I thought that was part of why that was done to.
It is.
Because some of these streets, I mean, they park on them and if, if they park on them on both sides, it's pretty difficult to get through there with emergency equipment, et cetera. That's particularly a problem.
You can address that, but when we get into designing houses, that, that when you want the house sitting out 20 foot in front of your garage, that's not a very.
It's not, it's not very, it's not a very, you're right.
I, I have a house that has a garage with a setback and I think my house is very appealing. And I, and it also has a bonus room that I use quite frequently, so there is usable space in there.
You're not in an affordable housing district.
Traditional, traditional home design doesn't even include a garage. Garages came in around the 50s.
We'll require them to make the streets wider instead of setting the garages back.
Because that pushed the cost down into the HOA, the developer still has to pay the cost. If you, the cost of the driveway expansion is cheaper than cost of the road expansion, which then provides for maintenance and additional cost for repair down the line for the whole HOA, which impacts every property owner at the same time with assessments. We're looking, not we, let me rephrase that. When I'm looking at ways to make build, building and construction more affordable for neighborhoods to hopefully help bring the cost down, we're looking to lower the amount of pavement that is required on the street, lower the amount of, of extra space that is not used or not put toward the public health and safety for the community. Make sure that we have the house placement so that the future owner can actually enjoy it the way that they'd like to enjoy it. So there's lots of different things that we've put into this discussion.
As long as you've got, you got a double garage. As long as you've got, you've got a double garage and you've got room to park two cars behind it, that should be sufficient. Talking to you. I've visited, I've got a niece that lived in Charlotte and what the, they were real close to the road, but the, what they had was they had extra parking, several places located where you had to, where you had to overflow parking or whatever.
The issue is, is people are not using their garage to park their car in. It's a man cave or it's a storage unit. I went and picked my grandson up from an older development. I mean, it's been built probably within the last 10 or 12 years. And literally, the house I was going to was at the end of the development and I swear there was bumper-to-bumper cars down both sides of the road, all the way to the back of the development.
And that's inconvenient, but it's a life safety issue when it becomes a fire truck having to go through that. And that's part of the reason that we do things like this, get the cars off the private, off the roadway so that public safety can have their access that they need and that the owners of the property can safely get to their homes. This is one of the options.
So I think Chairman Harper, what he was suggesting, even if we widen the roads, or was it Mr. Mosteller? If we widen those roads to then create more opportunities so if they do park on the roads, folks can still move through them.
But we could, we had an option that we discussed in another section where you don't get to park on the street unless the street is 30 feet wide or more. If the street is 30 foot wide and can accept that car space as well as have a 22-foot right-of-way so that the public safety can make it, then we could remove this requirement. But until we have that, this requirement is a less expensive option.
Because there's one thing that I want to clarify. It's, we have the legal and then we have the practical. So if we don't provide the opportunities for them to have sufficient space for parking, and I do agree with Mr. Carnes that most people use their garages to, for whatever reason, it is not to park their cars. We need to give them enough room so that they can park either in the driveway or if they do park in the street, because if we don't allow for those options and we do have a restriction like we're talking about in place, what it's gonna create is a nightmare for our Sheriff's Office because people are gonna be constantly calling them. It's gonna be extremely difficult to enforce that and we basically have a rule that we are not gonna be able to enforce as a practical matter.
We actually got a call in my office that someone wanted us to do something because the person across the street had parked on the street and the person that called us said, well, now I can't back out of my driveway. Well, we went out and looked. She had space to back out. She just didn't feel comfortable doing it. So she felt pinned in her house.
The other option is to say, okay, the depth of the lot's gotta be deeper.
Right.
Which again is gonna raise the cost of the house because now you're having more property that the house is in.
No, you're gonna be on a bigger acreage and the lot's gonna be bigger.
If we can provide more opportunities.
There'd be less houses in the neighborhood.
A lot better than.
I believe that providing more opportunities for housing like townhomes and the like in different areas can help offset some of that. But right now, we just don't have enough availability for townhouses in the code. And it needs to be a regular option rather than a special mixed-use option.
I don't want to prolong the conversation, but to what Mr. Louis said, if you don't accommodate for the cars, that they're not parking them in the garage, we can address that. But is the true issue people not parking in the garage because they don't want to and they want to have a man cave or they use it for storage because there's not enough storage built into the houses? Or because they can't park their cars? If you take a County Explorer, some of those will not fit in some of the garages, let alone two of them. So I would suggest is part of the issue, the size of the garage. It's not because people don't want to, but you literally cannot put two SUVs in many of these garages. So I don't know if that's something to consider.
I think one of the other problems in some of the neighborhoods that have been there for a while is that now you've gotten people that moved in and their kids were 10 years old and now they're driving. And they may have two in the house that's driving, so where they put those two cars is on the street.
If they put them in their driveway, they block the sidewalk.
Yeah.
We could give them the option of moving the houses back or making the streets wider. I mean, something's gotta be done. It really is, it's an issue.
The driveway moveback was a compromise between having the entire setback moved farther back for the house because of the points that have been made before that a lot of people use their rear yard property as their private area for entertainment. The front yard is in the public. The more yard in the front that we require to be set back, the less opportunity to have in the backyard and less we extend the lot size, which case makes the property a little more expensive. In traditional neighborhood design, if you think about neighborhoods that our parents and our grandparents grew up in, a lot of them were, the houses were closer to the street because there was one car, if there was a car, in the community and, or in the household. They walked to places, they lived close enough to walk to places. That's called traditional neighborhood design or TND. And when you have transportation options or walkable options, you don't need to focus as much on the car. We just don't have that right now. It might be something we can aspire to, you know, decades down the road, but right now, we need to accommodate the vehicles that people have safely and securely so that they have a reasonable expectation that their quality of life won't be impacted by their neighbor's vehicles.
And you got to understand, a lot of people that are moving here are moving from New York, Chicago. When we go to visit our son in New York and you get an Airbnb, you have to remember that on Thursday and Tuesday or Monday, Wednesday and Friday, you're gonna have to move that car to the other side of the street so they can street sweep or pick up the trash. And that's what people are used to.
I, yeah, I don't think I want to aspire to that.
No, that's not the part I want to aspire to either.
With the TND is, they also have the garages facing the back and then you have alleys that are created, which is an additional cost for developers and which is why TNDs traditionally are more expensive than regular neighborhoods.
But the walkability and the typical design is highly desirable and they do, they are not areas you often find affordable housing.
Yeah, it's Baxter Village.
Yes, or Market Common in Myrtle Beach.
Yep.
We also got comments about phasing should remain an option and not a requirement. The phasing was put in there as a response to a lot of the folks that call and say, they just took down a whole 20 acres of trees. What are you gonna do about it? And I can't do anything about it, but I'd like to. So phasing was put in, in part, not just for trees, but also because the stormwater plans for the development can be reviewed in groups. And you can also, the phasing can work along with the water and sewer phasing that is already required by the Water and Sewer Division.
But that, that's gonna have to have an acreage requirement. I mean, for five acres, it'd be pretty hard to do that, or 30 acres even to do what you're talking about. So really, that's gonna apply to the larger tracts?
Well, there's a lot of smaller tracts that are doing phasing, surprising, surprise me. We have.
Lancaster County?
But the water and sewer, maybe not, but we have developers that have less than 50 houses that are doing their parts and phases.
In Lancaster County?
I want to go back to.
Because of cost.
The setbacks. Does it make sense, 30 and 40 feet, you're not gonna get two cars or whatever, four cars deep. If you did the principal setback 35 feet and let them build porches out front of that, you'd still, you'd have 35 feet. That's off the right-of-way, right?
Yeah, the porches are allowed all the way up to the, yeah.
If you're 35 feet, you still got the, how wide is the right-of-way at house?
It depends. It really depends on the road. Sometimes it's 22, sometimes it's 26. But more often than not, the property line ends just behind the sidewalk. So there's less than a car, less than a car length between the curb and the property line. We recommended 40 feet because a standard parking stall is nine by 19, nine foot wide by 19 feet long in order to accommodate the SUVs and the large vehicles that Mr. Marstall talked about. And having those back-to-back between the property line and the edge of the garage allows for two vehicles to stay in a one-lane driveway. Now, if they want to do it double-wide instead of double-long, if you want to write that, if you want us to write that flexibility in there, I'm happy to do that. That would prevent the 40-foot setback on the garage that Mr. Harper is concerned about and would still provide two, but you'd have to have a double-loaded driveway and we'd have to change the requirements on that.
I have a problem with, with, we want affordable housing and we're setting the garages back. We're taking that space above the garage away in a lot of situations because you can't access it. Because you either gotta go straight in it through the other part of the house or you gotta come up steps. And if you set the garage too far back, you can't use it.
So you're fine, you're looking in, help me understand this. You're looking in pattern books for types of houses?
I'm looking at, you're looking at, you're looking at a house. Most of them, the garages are, they might be two or three foot offset out front or out back. But the space over all these garages in every house that's being built, two-story house, they use it either as a bonus room or a bedroom. If you set that garage back, you have issues accessing that from inside the house.
The bonus rooms, in my studies and my experiences, the bonus rooms add to the cost of the house and are not required. Maybe they're, maybe they're popular, absolutely. But if you're talking about making affordable housing, bonus rooms don't always make it affordable.
You know, anything we do, I hate to tell everybody up here and y'all, it's not gonna help affordability.
But affordability.
It's not gonna make $2,000 difference in a lot.
But a lot of affordable housing don't have garage. They have driveways. So y'all talking about $400,000.
Depends, it depends on their definition of affordable.
The developers are not gonna build a starter home now is $350,000.
If you go, I'm talking about, I've seen houses built up University Drive, of starter homes with no garages but driveways.
There will be no more, that's when they could buy lots for $15,000.
Those houses have been built within the last year.
They were built on lots that were already there.
Yes, they were.
It will not be built on new ones.
But I'm saying, my definition of affordable house is different from y'all's.
Not different from mine. So one, do we want hardy plank or do we want vinyl siding? Is, I mean, if we want to, so are we okay with vinyl siding?
No. Let me tell you, you need to come to Lancaster then.
But that, those are the questions because it's not.
It depends on how close the houses are. If you're up in Indianland and you're 10 feet apart, you don't want.
It depends on how close they are.
Ask the people who houses that burned in Sun City.
Can I make a recommendation that we, what we have talked about is having different regulations for the Panhandle and leave them alone, South Lancaster.
But it's a question of what, what do we want these neighborhoods to look like? Because if we're talking about affordable housing, hardy plank versus vinyl is gonna be different. A starter home is gonna, so I don't think it's just a question of the type of zoning, but what are the design elements that go into those homes? Because if you talk to developers, they will tell you, you can have whatever size lots, but if you add a bunch of design elements, that's gonna increase the cost of the home. We were talking about cars versus, garages versus carports. Those are all options.
The one other thing is that in the Panhandle, there's a high propensity of HOAs that have their own regulations as regards the type of housing.
Most of the MDR property in the county right now, there's like three parcels in the Panhandle. There's one out in Mr. Mosteller's district. There was a rezoning and there's a subdivision that's planned by John Hardy. I think of one in Kershaw and it was a downzoning. The way I feel about it, I want, I went to the meeting yesterday and the mayor spoke. They are in a growth mode. The city wants growth. I'm in an area where mine, we have, we have the most sewer besides anywhere in the county except maybe the city and the Panhandle. A lot of my neighborhoods are old. There's a lot of stuff that's being rebuilt. There are, there are some MDR parcels that are buildable and there's some that are not. The schools date back to the 40s. They still go, I'm 65, Brooklyn Springs is still there. South, well, South Junior High School is still there and hasn't been remodeled. And if we slow down development in my area, we won't never get new schools. The houses are getting remodeled and I want to leave it the same because it ish, there is a lot of interest in properties around Lancaster that have never been before and I want to leave it alone in my part of the world. I don't care what you.
The only thing I want to tell you is.
I don't care what you do in Buford, but I would like my part of the world to be left alone.
Is that your personal property you're talking about?
I have personal property there. Yes, I do. I have, I have one that was under contract.
Leave me alone district.
Yeah, leave me alone or leave us alone. Leave my part of the county.
That new development of University Drive, is that high-density, medium-density?
It's gonna look like, look back behind Walmart and that's what that is.
But that is, what is it, patting, what you call that, siding?
Hardy boom.
That's what that is and those houses are going up at the rate of, I don't know how many. That's.
But you're gonna run into the same problems you did in the Panhandle. We, you, the growth in the Panhandle is out of control and you're gonna have the same problems down here with fire, EMS, roads.
Well, I saw this go from a.
Are you gonna put in?
Go up in until where the schools went down to nothing and now our town is thriving and I want it to keep thriving. You're growing or you're dying? And I don't want to die.
Should grow, but I would suggest that you look at countywide impact fees, countywide school impact fees. Because the school is gonna ask for a bond and they don't have any darn impact fees. Who can support the bond?
The impact fees did not work because we didn't apply them to existing housing.
You didn't start them soon enough.
You can't apply impact fee to an existing house.
I mean, to existing projects.
I mean, that might have made a difference if we'd done them 10 years earlier. But you can't, you can't apply one to an existing house because it's already built.
You can't apply them to existing homes, but you can apply them to homes that have not been permitted, even though the development is underway.
Can we look at for different parts of the county and let this council vote on it?
So one question that I, or just one.
We're talking about all along and we still haven't got proposals for the different sections of the county and we have, we have talked about that.
That's built into the comprehensive plan. It's in the comprehensive plan.
We talked about this clustered.
It's in the comprehensive plan in general.
So the cluster subdivision overlay standards, can they be separate in?
They are separate.
They are separate.
Yes, so the MDR discussion that we just had was just for medium-density residential zones.
Yeah, but is that just for the Panhandle and not the rest of the county?
No, the MDR is countywide at this point.
But we can make it.
But you can change it.
You can do a lot of things.
I know, I could go home if it all quit talking.
Is that the takeaway? You do want three different MDR standards?
That's what we're asking. I mean, that's.
If that is possible.
We could create new zones that apply to wherever you'd like to create it as long as we make sure that we're doing it fair and equitably, that we don't leave, we don't have too many zones that leave people unavailable to. have too many zones that leave people unavailable to have affordable house options. But we have to have the availability, we have to have equity, we have to have...
Can we do this? Can we just take the Indianland area as the top third? Because I am truly concerned about Indianland and the traffic problems and all that. Could we get the UDO focusing on Indianland with the idea we'll look at mid Lancaster next and of course the southern part after that? But I think our biggest emphasis needs to be Indianland and what do we think needs to be put up there? But also in the back of our minds, remember that we're gonna do something in mid part of county in the southern part. And let's quit arguing.
Yeah, but you're gonna do, you're gonna...
We'll take some things off the table that way.
We're really gonna be focusing on the Panhandle in the southern part of county because the central part is pretty much the city. The city is already doing what they do. It's outskirts around there.
I don't know, you're talking about...
There's a lot of area in the middle part of county.
1,900 houses, you're talking about Riverside.
If you look at how they did the original draft, the southern part is my district, a little bit of Billy Mostellers. I kinda thought Billy might want more of his than mine, but some of his belongs to the mid district. So it's not just the city.
I guess it depends on what we're classifying in the mid district.
Well, I gotta go back and look at the map that they've developed for us.
It's in the comprehensive plan materials that you were given. Now, I apologize, Ms. McGiff, I don't know if you've received the packet with the draft comprehensive plan in there.
Yeah, I did.
Comprehensive plan has goals based on the Panhandle area, the central area and the southern area. And those goals are different because the neighborhoods are different in those areas. But like Ms. Snowden just reminded me, we have a lot of federal grants and other things that come through our community that when they're looking at our community for grant opportunities, one of the things they look for is equity. And that's why I discuss things like equity and affordable housing, even if we don't have the quote-unquote Section 8 or the standard affordable housing much in the unincorporated areas. We do have some in the incorporated areas and we need to be able to have the option for that in our code.
Do you knock the top of your head, what is classified in the mid area? How far out does it go?
No ma'am, I don't, I apologize.
I think it was out the highway five.
We have it.
The mid district started in that area and then it went south of the city in Lancaster. I don't know how far.
It didn't go as far as he's...
It goes into Steeves area and it's all of my area pretty much, it's immediate.
Well, they need to get you that comprehensive study. You'll know then.
I have a question, did y'all make a note about impact fees for the whole county? Because the last time we had discussions on that, the general consensus was, no, we don't want to do that. It sounds like things have changed.
The Planning Commission has also made a motion to recommend that you investigate them as well.
Please.
They've already done that.
Should have done them north of Lancaster, but my district goes all the way down to Arrowood, so I really don't want my district to change.
I don't want to get too far in the weeds.
Want to be aligned with the Panhandle.
I don't want to get too far in the weeds on this. The election districts were not considered as part of the drawing of the space for the three sections of the county. The breaks were done based on both highway divisions and development divisions rather than political boundaries.
And the two that need to know it the most are over there talking and it's all that.
I got you, that's all right. It's on the record.
And the northern...
They can rewind.
And the northern part of the county, we having these issues with setbacks and whatever. And we wanting to cut back on housing, not then make these neighborhoods as big. Why don't we just make them make their lots a little bit bigger, we can set the house back and the people can still have backyard. We can do that. For developer, either build it or don't build it.
We can do all kinds of things, but we need to come to a consensus at some point on that.
And it wouldn't make as many houses per acre, which is gonna be a lot better community. And I think that's what we need for the Indianland area.
You can do that, I think, the, some of the requirements, if you're gonna make your lots a little bigger, you may have to reduce open space or park space by percentage or two of points, going from like 20% to 18%, something like that and make the lots a little bigger.
Or just reduce the amount of units you get.
Or your park space, but it wouldn't be as much.
So what'd you get out of this and where are you going with it?
Wait, here's...
Oh, I can't say what just went through my head.
I would love to hear that thought bubble.
We're way out in the weeds right now.
So here's what I would, what I would suggest is if we can do kind of the opposite of what Mr. Blackman suggested and start with the southern end of the county, because in the northern portion of the county, we don't want any additional growth. I mean, we wanted to be left alone too and we weren't, unfortunately. But at this point, let's just leave it alone, let's just not do anything and move to the south of the county where Mr. Harper would like to see more of the growth. And I think we can focus on that first and then allow that development to proceed.
If that's what you guys want, I'm good with that. Y'all are the ones that got the biggest problems.
I think we got to address some of the problems in the Panhandle because there's some stuff that's allowed by right that we need to address.
He can't have it both ways, guys.
I think we should, because that is true. And also there'll be, I know there's several property owners, because I gotten calls that want to rezone their property in the Panhandle.
But then that's not by right.
I think that might be a good idea if we are, there is some sewer around Kershaw and is possibly allowing some different type of neighborhoods, non-traditional. I don't know if you could get a developer to go that far south at this point, but if you could get something, I don't know, Charleston-type housing or something like that and allow for additional units, that you might get some different type developments because there are people moving to Kershaw.
I mean, I don't have a problem going ahead and doing that, but I want to also have the priority for the Panhandle and...
I was just trying to come up with a simple way to start taking the bites of the elephant here is starting one of the three areas. But if y'all want to go between all of them, we'll just keep having these discussions and eating chocolate chip cookies.
That's why I asked Allison what she got out of this.
You know, we gotta look at people's rights. They own their property and they got a right to develop it or whatever. So we can't cut completely everything out. You got the belt property's gonna be broken loose every one of these days and it's gonna be full of houses and ain't no way you're gonna stop it because the worst's at and I just don't...
Yeah, but we can, we can buy ordinances and development, we can, we can say what it's gonna look like.
That's right.
We should be able to...
Can't stop them from building houses.
No, and we probably shouldn't if the infrastructure was there.
Right, I understand it.
They got a lot of rock.
But I will ask from Ms. Harden, are we basically saying you're looking at what I would consider a graduated development standards based upon the area? Meaning you have minimum in one area, maybe a little bit more in another area and a whole lot of requirements in the third, but if someone in the area with a lot of the requirements and the builder wants to use those same amenities in the other area, they can still do that? It's more of a minimum, meaning you have minimum standards, but if someone wants to do the architectural features, if they want to have more setbacks, that it would be allowed, you can go more.
They could do more than they're required.
I think that's true in the Panhandle, if they want to do more and enhance it, they can.
I think what I'm saying graduated, you have different requirements and they ramp up in different areas, but you can do, okay. Ms. Harden, the next topic?
Yes, sir, absolutely, sir.
You do that one in like...
Cluster subdivision. Let's make them closer together.
Is that the same discussion?
This is, well, it is related.
Same as the first.
It's a close cotton?
Close neighborhoods in order to preserve open space that's in hazardous area or property that is not as developable and allow for less infrastructure to be installed and still maintain the same number of units. The benefits of this is that it protects areas that are prone to risk from development, either by water or by slut, scour. Overall development, infrastructure footprint is reduced, long-term maintenance costs are reduced, so your HOA doesn't have to pay as much down the line. And then property values have the potential to increase with the access to increased amount of open space. So in the CSOD, the cluster subdivision overlay district, which is applicable currently only to MDR. And that was, I wanted to push for more zones, but staff said that they didn't think that we were ready for it, so deferred to them and the Planning Commission also agreed not to do outside of MDR. But to allow flexible setbacks, a range of setbacks versus a standard setback to reduce the need for variance. One of the things about clustering houses together is that, especially if you're doing it for like tree protection or flood areas, is that you will end up sometimes with a house that has a protected tree or protected area on the lot that then prevents the house from being set in a certain way without going to the Board of Zoning Appeals for a variance, which is a typical thing you would do with a piece of property that has a natural function that is impeding the location for the house. Having a flexible setback in there reduces the amount of time for the development or for the property owner, reduces the amount of money and investment for the property owner so that, because they don't have to go to the Board of Zoning Appeals, it gives us a little bit of wiggle room so that if there's a tree to protect or a flood plain to be avoided, that we can allow that to happen. Parking plan requirement for overflow, we talked about that. I heard a lot of y'all were in favor of this, so yay. Reducing phasing to reduce mass grading, same as last time, and a plan, talk about tree species and sizes to be protected, talking about creating a tree ordinance. We get a lot of calls about trees and issues.
I may comment on, I mean, the phasing's fine in bigger developments, but in a smaller development, I don't see how you can, you know, if you got 100 lot subdivision, they're not gonna phase it.
They have.
Because you, what they, what the developers or whatever run into now is they're paying for water and sewer taps up front. And to, in reality, your sewer might come in off the back and your, everything else off the front. And if you're gonna live in that subdivision, you're better off if they do all that grading up front than allowing people to move in and then they start having dirt all over everything. So I kinda disagree with, the phases happen, I feel sure like Rose, whatever it's called up there, will be done in phasing, but a smaller subdivision like what was built over there behind old Walmart, you know, it was all built at once and they'll, they'll put a second coat of...
Mass grading.
Yeah.
We have had several...
You gotta be careful. And the other thing I'm concerned about, if you went over to the open space requirement, we used to have 25% open space and then we had...
5% park.
5% park. But now I see we're taking away the park space and requiring 30% open space and then you would have to have parks on top of that. The numbers just don't, the numbers don't work.
We're taking away the requirement for the park and just including the 5% in the open space. The increased lot, some of the concerns, the increased minimum lot area to 7,500 would make allowed density very hard to achieve. Currently at the two and a half units per acre from MDR, you, if you measure it out, you're leaving about 7,000 square feet per acre on the plat. Typically that's eaten up by infrastructure, but if it's, if the structures, infrastructure and the design is compact, then it leaves land on the table. We looked at, we're reducing it to 7,500 square feet on the basic and then additional incentives to get down to 5,000 square feet because there is some concern about the applicability. And I've heard several times from y'all and from a lot of the folks in Indianland that the smaller lots that are closer together isn't always what they want in their neighborhoods. Now, it's something that we need in general to help protect development and put it on the high ground, but the benefit of this is, in this particular overlay, a cluster subdivision or a conservation subdivision should be there because the land has a challenge and can't be developed in a normal way. It should not be just an out.
Well, a cluster development such as Treetops is not a cluster development in your definition. It does not blend in and it does not protect any of the land. It was just clear the land that they could put houses on and they put houses on.
There should be a better tie-in. I don't know about Treetops history per se.
Well, I do.
It does keep open space.
And I know other ones. And there's one right up the road from me and they just cleared it all out.
Development should go on the land that's easier to develop, the high ground, the flat grounds and the areas that are slopes.
Yeah, but some of the open space should be on that land also.
And tree protection ordinance, if we get that, we can get that going too. So we'd also talked about the setbacks with garages, we've had that discussion. There was a comment that this should be available to MDR properties over 30 acres. We didn't have a minimum. It is available to 30 acres, but it's also available to properties less than 30 acres. And is there a requirement for park area and the underlying zoning, but the park 5% is incorporated into the open space. Sidewalks on both streets increase cost, yes it does, but also increases pedestrian safety. Fire codes should dictate the type of materials used. I don't recall the type of materials, I'll be honest, I don't recall that there was a type of materials in this particular one. I do recall that it said that in some of the areas that we discussed, that the materials needed to match the existing neighborhoods. Those are for infill development options so that if you have a duplex going in, in an area where there wasn't one before, that it needs to not stand out, it needs to be in compliance with the developments around it. But I don't believe cluster subdivision had something about the facades on it.
I still want to be on the park space cluster. You got 30% open space and you're still gonna have 5% park space?
I'll double check on that. That's something, I thought we had converted to open space in this, but I'll double check. Thank you for that. It's been a while since I looked at this.
I mean, I think that there's a public opinion would say don't do cluster north of five.
I will tell you as an environmental planner and somebody with a certified flood plain management certification, that cluster subdivisions are really good when they're used properly.
I disagree 100% with you because the developer's gonna win every time.
I agree with Mr. Graham.
I'm just happy anytime that...
You might have your ideals, but I'm gonna tell you the real world.
No, no, this isn't about ideals, this is about protecting the lands that don't need to be built on in the first place.
Well, I know a lot about protecting land.
Yeah. Oh, yes you do.
I do. We have done, we have walked the walk.
Yes, you have.
Well, that's a conversation I want to have with Director Harden because I have concerns about spot zoning, obviously, and that's illegal. But to get around that, you create districts and then larger areas of land, you can do these kind of things in. So I think there's a larger conversation here that I've been discussing over here with Administrator Marsall, that we need to look at for what you are talking about with your different distinctions between the county, you know, slicing it into half, thirds, whatever it is, so that we make sure we don't run afoul of spot zoning and then make sure you've got what you want in each of these different districts.
I know we can't vote, but I see some hands shaking and I think, I think that's what we want.
You know what'd be really fantastic is to wrap all of this up into the UDO rewrite and not do this ordinance.
Yes.
As much as I enjoy a couple of points on the ordinances...
I understand that we'll probably have to pay extra.
The grading is something that has been asked for many times, the parking has been asked for many times, the street concerns have been asked for many times, but if we can't get to a consensus easily, then by all means, let's put it in the UDO discussion pocket and have that as part of the more broad discussion on how to...
I think we should hammer this out before you get into UDO because it's gonna bog down the UDO.
We've been hammering on this since March.
I know we have. Well, the UDO is supposed to be complete by the end of next year and I would be very surprised if that's gonna happen.
Yeah, if we'd have gone with that flex ordinance, we'd be good.
I think the first step is to divide the county up into, to get the legality.
Let's find that piece out.
I think it'll be simple from there.
Yeah, well, because you and I...
The underlying work's already done.
We'll be on the same page then.
But Allison, we'll think about overflow parking real quickly.
Yes, sir.
You know, we're gonna have this requirement, but that overflow needs to be reasonably close to the units that it's serving. It doesn't need to be a half mile away.
I agree.
Hey, we met it, you know, we got one parking per unit here right at the front door.
I will tell you... I will tell you.
But you said you needed three, so we put two out there in Egypt.
What, what is going to happen with that in front? Because I, we had this exact issue in one of my previous jurisdictions and I'll tell you the story real quick. That the idea was we put parking space over here so that people that just, that want to put the stuff in their garages, where we had counted their parking, that they would have an opportunity to park somewhere else. They fought for every inch of every parking space near their house, putting out cones and chairs, calling it their space on the public right of way. We, the, we had a councilman come up and say, you know, we don't have a parking problem. We have a walking problem. People are not walking from that step three houses down to their house with their groceries or their luggage or whatever. They just want to park in front of their house and go. But, that said, parking areas for neighborhoods, absolutely viable. The development pushback I've had in the past has been that, oh, you're taking away one of my developable lots. Like, okay then, let's widen the street. And the cost of that offset, oh, well, let's, let's look at that neighborhood parking again.
Mr. Chairman and Council, from a procedural standpoint, I believe the next thing would be you postponed it to these matters, these ordinances to move to your cows. So, we would plan on putting them back on your agenda. Perhaps council would want to consider, obviously you can't vote this evening, but if there is a desire to hold off on doing anything with these ordinances and pushing this towards, into the UDO rewrite, then when they show up on your agenda again, you may want to postpone these indefinitely, kill them, vote them on whatever reading we are or not.
It depends.
Since the county council was the applicant, could they just withdraw?
Okay, I didn't realize it was that.
The county council is the applicant.
Or county council can withdraw this application and it's, it's gone and then we're dealing with it as Director Harden said in the UDO rewrite.
I think it's going to be predicated on your opinion of if we can create these different zones first. I think that's the first thing that we need to know.
And I think we can, Councilmember Graham, I think, I think we can for sure.
We want to know it, we can.
Exactly, but I, but I'm pretty, I mean, from, from my past experience with doing this, we can create different districts and that will avoid the spot zoning that I would be worried about where you're saying this area, this small area is only going to have this, this area has this. If we create these districts and you have these different standards, then you're, you're not running afoul of spot zoning. But Director Harden and I will make sure 100% that is the case. But that sounds like where council's wanting to go, is to have different areas of the council.
We'll have that answer at the next meeting.
And once we do that, then we don't want, I don't think we want to kill this, at least I don't want to kill it to the end of the UDO because we're going to be enough stuff in the UDO to study.
And I just wanted to bring up the procedural aspect from where we go from here. So, certainly when this comes back up on your agenda, Director Harden and I can have you an answer on 100% can we create these districts to avoid any spot zoning, et cetera. And then council can make the decision procedurally, do you want to withdraw the application? Do you want to postpone indefinitely? Do you just not want to second it? However, that's council's will at that point.
Director Harden?
Yes, sir.
The Planning Commission, do they want to do these amendments as well or do they want to have it all as part of the UDO rewrite?
The Planning Commission has stated in the last two UDO applications that they don't want to see any more UDO applications, that they want everything to be wrapped up into the rewrite.
That's my understanding as well, so I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Harden.
Thank you, Mr. Harper, appreciate you.
Mr. Chairman, I believe in, in discussion with the clerk, we'll have this on your December agenda, not the next one, so not the 27th. That will be the next one, so then we'll have an answer for sure by then for you.
And are we going to have a joint meeting with the Comprehensive Plan Study Group and this council before we adopt that?
Yes, that is, the intent is to have the stakeholder committee meeting the council together. Looking at potential January.